Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and convene a special public business session of the city council. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Irene for a roll call, if you would, please.
Mayor, Councilmember Bagby? I don't think she quite made it yet.
Okay, why don't we go on then?
Oh, here we go. Apologize for the delay. Okay. Councilmember Bagby, are you present now?
Yes, I was, and I'm actually going to log in and get on my computer. My computer was frozen, so I'm on my iPad, and I'm going to switch over in a minute.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
I see. Vice Mayor Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Walter?
Here. Okay. Anyone with a conflict of interest to declare?
I declare item-
On the special meeting, a conflict of interest.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Agenda review, are there any changes to the agenda for the special public business section?
Mayor members of council staff doesn't have any changes to the special meeting agenda?
Okay, then let's go ahead and do public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on the items that are not on the agenda may do so. I mean, do we have anyone out there in the waiting room?
No hands are raised for this item, Mayor.
Then let's move on to the one item that we have, new business. It's a resolution ratifying the the emergency services proclamation declaring the local emergency-related LNU. David, is that you?
Mayor, members of council, good evening. This is David Kelly. I'm your city manager. The item before you tonight is, as the mayor just indicated, a resolution ratifying Director of Emergency Services proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency related to the LNU lighting complex fire, or otherwise Wallbridge Fire, and other high-risk fire-weather conditions. By way of background, the Cloverdale Municipal Code contains provisions, particularly Section 2.44 got 060, that empowers the Director of the Emergency Services to proclaim the existence, or threaten the existence, of a local emergency when the city council is not in session. Starting on August 16th, a dry lightning storm occurred in Northern California, which started various, or induced various lightning, or like various lightning-induced wildfires in Sonoma, Napa, and Lake County. A CAL FIRE referred to the wildfires as the Lake Napa Unit Lightning Complex Fire, with an incident start date on August 17th, 2020, at 6:40 a.m. Two fires within this complex specifically impacted Sonoma County, including the Wallbridge Fire and the Stewart's Fire. This complex fire exacerbated other disaster conditions that existed within the county, included, including extreme heat, rolling powder outages, and the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, the fires continue to generate a significant amount of spoken ash that even today affect our air quality locally. And is required to respond to this event because of the nature of the impact to the city of Cloverdale and the call for evacuation orders and advisories by the Sheriff's Office that were in close proximity to the city. It was necessary for the city to open our emergency operations center and activate it, with all staff being presented over the weekend. As a result, and because of the ongoing nature, I, as the Director of Emergency Services, issued a proclamation declaring a local emergency. And what we're asking of council this evening is to adopt a resolution that would ratify the proclamation that's issued by, that was issued by the city manager acting as the Director of Emergency Services. With that said, there's additional information that I'd be happy to present to council, but the action that we're requesting tonight is adoption of the resolution, and that would certify that the proclamation would continue in existence until the emergency is fully contained. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, council members. Are there any questions on this item? I don't see any, so how about public comment? Is there any public comment? Anyone wishing to address this item with the council?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
And we have a resolution, I believe, on page six of the package that I'm looking at.
I'll offer the resolution by title only.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Do you want me to read it?
Please.
"A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale ratifying the Director of Emergency Services proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency related to the LNU lighting complex-wallbridge fire and high-risk, high-fire-risk weather conditions."
Irene, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. All right, well, I think we are going to move to the, we're going to convene the regular city council meeting at this time. Is that correct, Irene? Thank you. We've already done the roll call, but why don't we just stand for a second and do a pledge of allegiance? "To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty to govern." Thank you. We pulled out a closed session. Jose, anything to report on the closed session?
No reportable action was taken. That's a nice closed session, Mayor.
Thank you. Conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest on this part of the city council?
Yes, I need to recuse myself, item six.
Anyone else? Then how about we do an agenda review. Any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, council member staff does not have any changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Public comment, at this time, anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. And there's no, there, there's no one here at CPAC. Irene, is there anyone in the com, in the waiting room?
No raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you. The first item under Proclamations and Presentations is a Certificate of Appreciation acknowledging the contributions by Marge Gray, and I'm just going to take a second and read this as soon as I can find it here. Irene, could you pop that up? Oh, never mind, I, I have it. Sorry. And the certificate reads, "City of Cloverdale, Cloverdale City Council, Certificate of Appreciation acknowledging the contributions made by Marge Gray in recognition of her service to the Cloverdale community as resident, local artist, past member of the historical society, participant in the Chamber of Commerce, community leader, and preserver of Cloverdale history." And Marge, I, I don't believe you're with us this evening. Irene, is that correct? Do you see Marge out there?
That's correct, Mayor. She's not.
Nina, you received a call from Marge earlier in the week saying that she'd be unable to attend. Okay, so I'm going to hand-deliver this to Marge, but I do want to open it up to the council members that would like to say something about Marge's commitment to the community, and I'd also like to open it up to the community to say a few words about Marge. As most of you know, Marge is leaving Cloverdale. She's moving down to Southern California to be closer to her children and her grandchildren, and, and I know we are sorely going to miss So council members, if I could just kind of open it up, if you'd like to add something, I'm sure Marge will be watching this Zoom meeting at a later date. Mary Ann, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I would. Marge has been a good friend of mine for many, 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 many years. I will miss her terribly. I've spent a couple days with her the last couple weeks. If you walk into her house, it's pretty overwhelming right now. Boxes everywhere. She has gotten an offer on her house, and she has, I think, made an offer now on a little place down right between her two daughters, so she'll be close to both of them. On a personal level, I used to call her a lot just for basic advice on different things because she came from the same area that I did in the Midwest, and we had very similar attitudes and the same kind of dry humor. So on a personal level, I'm going to miss her very much. On a community level, I don't know of anybody that gave more of her time and effort, and she was so generous, also with donations to different organizations, her paintings, her husband's sculptures. She's going to be missed, so I just wish her the best. I doubt she will ever watch this Zoom, though, so I just wanted to say that I, I'm going to miss my friend.
You're muted, Gus.
Yes, Mayor Walter asked if any other council members had comments for Marge?
Yeah, I guess I would just add that I, I don't, I don't even remember when I met Marge. It would have been immedi-, sometime immediately after I moved to Cloverdale 20 years ago, and she and her husband have just been social fixtures and people we admired and people that have just given so much to the community, so I'm just really happy to see her recognized in this way for her contributions and, you know, her leadership and always her kindness, so even if she doesn't watch the video, at least she will have the certificate of appreciation to let her know how much we really do appreciate her and our community really will miss her.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public. If anyone in the waiting room or here at CPAC would like to say a few words about Marge, we'd love to hear them. Irene, is there anyone in the? No.
Was not going to let this opportunity go unmet. I'm Nina Handchep, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, but I'd known Marge and her husband Jim before he passed. Since I moved to Cloverdale and even before that, when my mother, my husband's mother, who owned the paper, was a supporter of her art, and there's almost no room in my house that either isn't covered by a Marge painting, wall hanging, or was covered by a painting or wall hanging. I get up in the morning, first thing I do is I look into a painting that she did, I call it Loon Lake. I'm not sure that it's actually named. It's a peaceful, beautiful place with one lone loon in this beautiful lake covered, shrouded in fog. Her art is, is something that I, it's a piece of me. I'm a steward. I will, every time I look at it, I treasure it. I've got a beautiful avocado wood quail that, that Jim had done as a fundraiser or had donated to CPAC, and I wish I could have gotten the whole family. She, she gave. She, she collaborated. She was a teacher, teacher of students, a teacher of adults, a teacher of children. She co-authored a book with another Cloverdale resident who since moved, and it's a history of Cloverdale, a beautiful work. It's an Arcadia book that I use as a resource all the time when people ask me about Cloverdale. She curated and knows just about everything there is to know about the Gould Shaw Museum, the Cloverdale Museum, the Gould Shaw House, the furniture, the, all of the stories, the, it's pretty fabulous. She will be missed. She, but she's left so much behind, and her legacy is all around us. It's woven, literally woven into the tapestry of our town. So I thank you, Marge. We will miss you. If I ever go to Southern California, you'll be on my list of people I want to see. Maybe you'll, maybe you'll come back up here with your daughters. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Nina. That was excellent. Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room that has their hand up to say a few words?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, well, Marge, it was, it was wonderful knowing you. I still feel that I know you like Mary Ann. If I get down to Southern California, I'm going to look you up, and, and please don't be a stranger to Cloverdale. Why don't we move on to the next proclamation proclaiming August 26th, 2020 as Women's Equality Day, and I have asked Vice Mayor Turner to handle this item.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm happy to read this proclamation for Women's Equity Day. "City Council proclamation proclaiming August 26th, 2020 as Women's Equality Day, whereas on August 26th, 2020, we mark the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which secured the right to vote for women, and whereas to remind us of the struggles of the past, present, and future, Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equality Day in 1971, and whereas Women's Equality Day, celebrated every August 26th commemorates the passage of women's suffrage in the United States and reminds us of the hurdles overcome by the heroic women who faced violence and discrimination to propel the women's movement forward. And whereas in 1976, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors established one of the first commissions on the status of women in the state of California with the purpose of promoting equal rights and opportunities that enhance the quality of life for all women and girls, and addressing issues of discrimination and prejudice that negatively affect women in Sonoma County. And whereas women now constitute nearly 50% of our workforce, the majority of students in our colleges and graduate schools, and an increasing number of primary, primary breadwinners. And whereas during the current COVID environment work, women workers in Sonoma County, including, including in Cloverdale, are disproportionately in the lowest-paying jobs and suffer higher rates of unemployment, and whereas even with the gains women have made, significant work remains to be done to ensure equal pay for equal work and especially regarding improving opportunities for lowest-wage workers. Whereas the City Council of the City of Cloverdale recognizes the commemoration of that day in 1920 on which all the women of America won their right to vote as an opportunity to continue to work for equal rights for all citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that our Mayor, Gus Walter, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the City Council, August 26th, 2020, as Women's Equality Day in Cloverdale, and I'm led to believe that we have somebody, let's see here.
I'm here, Commissioner Almond.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Almond. You are there. I was looking in the wrong spot. So I understand that you're here and might want to share a few words on behalf of this great proclamation.
I do, I do, I do. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council members. 100 years ago, you didn't have the right to vote in the U.S. if you were a woman, and Women's Equality Day celebrates the passage of that 19th Amendment, which granted women the right to vote on August 26th of 1920. The women's suffragists movement was successful in large part because a group of passionate individuals banded together to activate change. Activists used their voices and traveled a rough road to rewrite the old rules that were written by and for men but no longer worked. Sadly, change didn't happen overnight for the suffragists. It took decades. What we consider to be basic rights today, such as women's right to vote and own property, are the result of the hard work conviction of the trailblazers. We've come a long way, yet we have a long way to go. Women make up roughly 51% of the population, yet only 20% of Congress, less than 22% of city mayors are women, and we have yet to have a female commander in chief. These days, we're seeing more female candidates run for office than ever before. In addition, women make up the majority of voters in this country. Since 1980, the percent of eligible women voters who said they voted has been higher than the percent of men in every presidential election. Having a government that more accurately reflects the population would help push legislation forward to better reflect our wants and needs, from supporting equal pay to advocating for mandatory parental leave to greater protection against sexual harassment to gun safety. This is a, this is vital at a time when we still have a gender pay gap that widens for minorities. We need more women in leadership positions as to make decisions. Your Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women has increased representation and participation in Sonoma County via our Voices of Sonoma County Women Listening Sessions, which we did have one in Cloverdale and the survey. We also went into the jail and listened to incarcerated women, then worked with service providers who assisted the women in being more successful upon release from jail. Our Empowering Women ad hoc sessions have been encouraging Sonoma County women to apply for boards and commissions as well as to run for office. Equality is not a female issue. It's a social and economic imperative. Women can't wait for equality to happen. We have to make it happen. It is each of our responsibility to drive change. Educate ourselves on political issues. Get to the voting booths. Run for office if you feel called to do so. On Women's Equality Day and every day, let's rewrite the rules that no longer work and create new ones together. Thank you for the proclamation. Thank you to Sister Commissioner Cruz. Been with us for just over a month now. Cool. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Almond, thank you, and Vice Mayor Turner, thank you for reading that proclamation. I'm going to open it up now to the city council members if they'd like to say something, and then we're going to go ahead and open it up to the public. And Commissioner Almond, we are going to go ahead and somehow get you this certificate delivered to you, and maybe Councilmember Cruz can hand-deliver it to you.
That would be lovely, and then we'll get it up on our Facebook page.
Great. With, with that being said, council members, would you like to add anything to the proclamation?
Well, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Almond for being so welcoming and so supportive to me as a new commissioner in, in the county, and for also considering integrating my proposal into ongoing projects for empowering women, especially women of color, in Sonoma County. So thank you very much, Commissioner Almond and Sister. I guess I have to get used to saying Sister Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Anyone else on the council? Councilmember Bagby, please.
Yeah, thank you. I believe I met you, Tricia, at the listening session in Cloverdale. Marta and I attended that with you and Diana McDonald, and I believe it was after one of our council meetings, we came straight over there, and it was just, yeah, it was just, it was a great session, and we were really happy to be part of it, and we're really seeing the, the fruits of those efforts in Sonoma County. So thanks for, you know, reaching out to Cloverdale and making this special effort to, to come up here from, and I, I know that all of your, your, you and your staffers came from all over the county to come up to Cloverdale that night.
Yes, we did.
So thank you so much for doing that, and thank you for your service on a very important Sonoma County board. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room that would like to comment on this item?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Well, then, once again, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Commissioner Almond, thank you for, for coming up to Cloverdale to accept this award, and like I said, we will, we would get it to you somehow.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the recognition.
Moving on to the next item is a presentation by Hildum Brand Consulting LLC on the water and sewer rate study update. And it looks like this item is, that's why I flipped to it, is David, this is your item?
Mayor, I'm, I'm happy to address this item and introduce our speaker and presenter tonight. Quick background, the city operates both a water utility as well as a wastewater utility. The water utility, of course, is responsible for supply, treatment, and distribution of our water, and our wastewater system is responsible for collection, treatment, and system maintenance. Both of these utilities are housed in their own separate enterprise funds. City staff, including our Public Works Director, City Engineer, and Finance Director, actively work to maintain the financial stability of both of these utilities. A key step in this process is an update of the city's water and sewer multi-year financial planning models. This is intended to ensure that we recover costs of operation as well as reflect the existing user share of maintenance and capital improvement project costs within the rates. Previously, the council accepted a water and sewer rate study report in February of 2016. This, this report resulted in recommendations of adoption of water rate increases, which council supported, including a water rate increase of 7% in June of 2016 and 3% in July 2017, 2018, and 2019. We have now not had water rate increases since July 2019. In addition, that utility model also recommended increases in sewer rates of 3% in, in July 2017, July 28, and July 29. But in order to ensure that we continue on maintaining the financial viability of these enterprises and ensure full cost recovery of annual operating expense, it was determined necessary to update the current rates to address both operating and capital cost projections and other factors, including water demand. Council approved in agreement with Hildum Brand Consulting LLC to develop and update the water and wastewater rates and financial plans that build upon the rate study previously completed by the REED Group in 2016. Mark Hildum Brand will present the results of the updated water rate study work that's been completed to date and cover a number of important topics, and Mark will walk us through that. A couple of key discussion items that I'd just like council to be mindful of, as Mark presents this overview today, is direction whether to defer or eliminate proposed capital improvement projects, and there'll be some slides that speak to that, that, and that would be necessary if council decide, desires to reduce or smooth rate adjustments. Again, those capital costs for new projects that are intended to help maintain the system are reflected in this rate study. In addition, we're also requesting your direction whether to implement a pay-as-you-go strategy or to consider a debt issuance strategy for financing proposed capital improvement projects. And again, this is based on the fact that capital improvements tend to be some of your more significant investments for the future. more significant investments for the future, and there's opportunities to look at how those are financed. Last but not least is to discuss this timing, and really, this is a timing and scheduling of the public hearing to consider possibly adopting new rates as well as the timing of implementation of proposed rate adjustments. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Mark Hildembrand. Mark Hildembrand has been coordinating with staff on this effort, and he's going to walk you through a pretty detailed presentation on the water rate and wastewater rates model that he's prepared to date. Mark, turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, David, and thanks for having me this evening. I do have quite a few slides to go through, but I'll go through them at a fairly brisk pace, because I know you have plenty of other things on the agenda. But if I'm going through anything too quickly, please feel free to interrupt me and ask me to clarify or provide more detail. So as was mentioned, we are, we have, Bob Reed and I have completed a water and sewer rate study. What I'll go over tonight is that we'll go over, I'll describe the utility rate setting process in general, and some of the legal requirements that were required to follow California law. And then I'll go through the preliminary water financial plan, including a description of the water shortage surcharge. Then I'll go through the wastewater financial plan, we'll look at a rate survey and talk about the specific rates that are being proposed. I do want to point out that this is our first presentation to council on this topic. It's not our final recommendation, we will be coming back in a month with our final recommendation based on any input that we get this evening, any revisions that we make. So when we go through the rate setting process, there's for either water or sewer, there's three general steps that we follow. The first is looking at revenue requirements. You could also think of this as a financial plan. This is where we look at all the revenues coming into a utility and all the expenses. So most of the revenue will come in the form of rate revenue, which is what your customers pay on a monthly basis. But there's also some miscellaneous revenues that we'll talk about. And then your expenses come in the form of operating costs, debt service, and then cash-funded capital projects. The financial plan or revenue requirements is really focusing how much total rate revenue is going to be needed over the planning period, in this case, five-year period. And it also looks at potential debt strategies for trying to mitigate any rate increases. The second step, once we understand how much rate revenue we need, we look, we do cost of service, and cost of service is the cornerstone of some of the legal requirements that we'll cover in a moment. But this is looking at different types of customers and understanding how much it costs to provide them service. So how much of the total expenses should be collected from different types of customers? And the final step, the rate design, is once you understand how much you need to collect from certain types of customers, how are you going to collect it? Is it going to be in the form of a fixed rate, a volumetric rate, a tiered rate? So there's different ways that you can collect that revenue, and depending on your cost structure, there's different ways, or there's ways that can be justified, and it does need to comply with applicable law. So when we look at legal requirements, the law that governs all public utilities in California is called Proposition 218, it's part of the Constitution. And the general premise is that your revenue shall not exceed the cost of providing service. The more detailed portion of that is that the rates won't exceed the proportional cost of providing service, and that means that you do need to be able to show and demonstrate clearly that the amount that someone's paying on their bill is tied to that cost of providing service. And this has become a hot topic in California over the last seven or eight years. There was a landmark court case that really raised the bar for utilities across California and changed the way that many utilities do business. You'll find that the methodology that we're proposing tonight does not change anything dramatically from what was done five years ago with the Reed Group. We did review that methodology, and we find that it meets the legal requirements of California, and it remains appropriate. And so the adjustments that we'll be looking at will be primarily in the form of rate adjustments for the total bill, and the cost of service and rate design remain largely So first, I'm going to dive into the Water Enterprise Financial Plan. When we look at the, this is a schematic of your utility, the finances. These boxes aren't to scale, but I did want to scale them somewhat just to give you a sense. When you look on the left, the green boxes there show your revenue. Your largest source of revenue by far is your water rate revenue, but you also provide some miscellaneous services from which you get operating revenue. There's some interest earnings on your reserves. You do collect capacities fees from developers for new connections, and then occasionally you receive grants and you issue debt. That money goes into two different funds, there's your operating fund, which is predominantly paying for operating costs and debt service, and then your capital fund, which predominantly pays for cash-funded capital projects. So, let me, sorry. When we look at the, when we do these studies, the first thing we look at is the amount of cash reserves that you have in your coffers for the various utilities. So when, the Water Enterprise currently has just over $2 million in unrestricted cash, and then has another $470,000 in capacity fee fund. So the capacity fee fund is, again, the revenue that was collected from developers, and that money is restricted, it can only be spent on a specific type of capital projects. The, here's a pie chart of the revenues that you get in the Water Enterprise. As I mentioned before, the lion's share of revenue comes from your rate revenue, but you do also collect some revenue from a transfer from the general fund, which helps pay for some of your benefits. And you, the impact fees, again, is another way of talking about the capacity charges, which is the revenue that you collect from those developers. So it's a total of $3.6 million in annual revenue for this fiscal year. On the other side, here, we're looking at operating expenses and debt service, and you see that's 3.3 million down at the bottom. I want to be quick to point out that this is not all of your expenses. As I mentioned before, the utility has operating expenses, debt service, and also capital projects. And so this total at the bottom does not account for those capital projects, we'll talk about those in a moment. And those expenses vary significantly from year to year, depending on what projects are being done at the time. So those are treated a bit differently. Here you can see that about 37% of your costs are in the form of salaries and benefits, 15% is debt service, and then an assortment of other costs. Here's your capital spending. It says forecast, but I also showed a few years of history here, and you can see that over the last five years, the historical average spending has been about $1 million. And that's almost entirely made up of a single project that was done back in 2016. But in general, you've been, the water utility has been spending very little on capital, which is usually not a great sign, because a utility is always aging, the infrastructure's always in need of repair and replacement. And so it's important to have a proactive capital program that's addressing aging infrastructure. And so what's being proposed going forward is a more proactive look at addressing your assets and making sure that the utility continues to be, you continue to reinvest in your assets. And so you can see that the forecast going forward is going to jump to $2.8 million per year. And you can see some of those costs will be covered by impact fees, so against by developers. But a lot of these costs are going to be new costs that the district hasn't, or sorry, the city hasn't been paying in recent years. And so this is going to be the, one of the driving forces for the recommendations that we're going to be making regarding rates. I won't spend any time on this slide in detail, but you do have it in your packet if you want to look more closely at some of the specific projects that make up those, that spending over the next five years and beyonds. Here's a few pictures of projects. I am not personally familiar with the specific details of these projects, but it does show you some of the assets and some of the infrastructure that you have out there. You can see you have some large tanks, you have some powerful pumps, they're all over your system, and they're all of different ages and conditions, and they all need to be maintained over time. And so a lot of those capital projects are going to be used to address these assets, So the final picture that we look at when we look at the financial plan are your reserves. So this is trying to determine how much cash should be held in reserve over time. The city has three reserves, three reserve policies. One is called your contingency reserve, and that's basically equal to 25% of your operating cost, annual operating costs and debt service. And the intent of this reserve is to just make sure that you're covered in the event that there's a significant change in costs for delivering water. Can come in the form of many things, but a change in regulations, or labor costs, or whatever it may be. So you try to keep about $650,000 a year in that reserve. Your replacement reserve is intended to address what I mentioned before, which is that your capital spending can vary tremendously. I mean, if you look at this 10-year graph, you can see that some years it's zero and other years it's 5 million. Going forward, the city staff has done a good job of trying to smooth that out a bit, but the reality is that those projects won't always necessarily happen when you expect them to. And so you do want to keep a significant amount of money in the reserve to address that volatility in spending, to be able to absorb the higher years of spending, and then setting money aside into that reserve when you have a below-average year. So targeting about $3 million in general is the target there. And then your capital fee reserve, again, is the, was referred to earlier as the impact fees, and those are set aside for projects that are designated for that purpose there, the revenues that you collect from developers. So here is a rather complicated graph, I'll spend a few seconds here explaining what you're looking at. And so on the top here, what you see in the background is, the green in the background represents your revenue. So the dark green represents your non-rate revenue, and the light green represents your rate revenue that you collect from your customers. The, in the, superimposed on that, in the columns represents your expenses. So the dark blue represents your operating expense, the hashed blue in the middle is your debt service. And, and I'm sorry, that's not in the key, I need to fix that. And then the light blue represents your capital spending. And so any year that the columns are higher than the background is a deficit year where you're drawing down on your reserves. Down here, what you can see is your target reserves are the black line here, and your actual reserves are the red line. And you can see that in this particular scenario, if there's no rate increases whatsoever, your reserves will drop quickly and quite far. So this is just, this is not a realistic scenario, it's not being proposed, it's simply to put in the context what would happen financially to the utility in the event that no rate increases were adopted and the capital program proceeded as proposed. One thing that I'll just explain here is your debt coverage ratio. In simple terms, this is a measure of how easily the city can afford its debt. It's basically a measure of, you know, if you are paying a mortgage, the bank looks at how easily you can afford your mortgage in order to approve you. But you have to have at least a 1.2 coverage, and so you can see the numbers that drop below that level are highlighted in red here. And we keep an eye on that in the proposed scenarios to make sure that we keep that at the levels that they need to be. Here is the, here are the rate increases that would be necessary in order to proceed on a pay-go strategy. So when I say pay-go, it refers to pay-as-you-go, or it's not using debt to pay for capital projects. So you can see this bottom row shows zeros all the way across, because we're not going to be debt financing any capital projects in this scenario. And you can see the dark green up here represents the additional rate revenue that you would have as a result of these rate increases. So it would be 20% per year for three years, followed by really what amounts to about inflationary adjustments, 3.3% has sort of been the historical inflation rate, and so this is just above what has historically been inflation here. And that keeps the reserves above or even with the reserve targets for the planning period.
Mark, this is David Kelly. If you could just touch on why the front-loading of the proposed revenue increases in those first three years? If you could elaborate on that for council, I think that would be helpful, thank you.
Sure, yeah. So the front-loading occurs because we really want to target keeping your reserves, even with your targets here, because you really, the amount of reserves that you're targeting here are not, is not a huge amount for a utility your size. And so we really see these reserves as your minimum reserves. And so in order to hit this point here in 2030 of at least planning to have the reserves that your policy called for, you do need to have those rate increases in place. This next scenario here is if you issue debt. So this would, you can see the amount of debt down here, so this would be issuing $4 million of debt in 2024, and $2 million in 2025, that would likely be bundled together for a total of 6.2 million. There's some rounding going on there, but that's the, that's the general number that you'd be issuing. And you can see that the rate increases are smoothed out here. They do, it's important to note that while the rates aren't as large in the immediate term, you will eventually raise rates as high as, and sometimes even higher than when you do a cash financing approach. I just switched back to the previous slide. So you can see this is 60% without compounding. You can, you can see that you get to that point by about 2027 here, and then rates continue to go up, and that's largely because issuing debt essentially masks the fact that the city is really changing the way that it's doing business with the water utility. The city has historically deferred its repair and replacement costs, and that repair and replacement spending still exists out here in the future. And so out here in 2027 to 2031, not only are you paying for that cash capital, but you're also repaying the debt from the previous year. So that you can see that the overall rate increases end up being more out here in '27, '28, '29, because not only are you paying for that, you know, $2.8 or $3 million per year in cash capital, but you're also burdened with additional debt service.
Mark, before you, before you go on any further, I'd just like to open it up to council members to see if there's any questions thus far in your presentations. Will that throw you?
No, no, I think that's a great idea.
Councilmembers?
Yeah, I have a quick question, if I may.
Please.
Looking at the debt strategy scenario, would that involve us also paying interest rates, whereas the pay-as-you-go scenario may not?
Correct. Correct.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah, that, that is correct. You would be paying principal and interest on the $6 million debt.
Does the pay as you go strategy have less interest involved in it just by the, the sheer structure?
Certainly, yeah, there would be no additional interest. You, you currently have existing debt, which you can't do anything about, but the pay as you go would have no additional interest paid by the utility.
Okay. So one could argue we were using the rates more efficiently because we're not paying. What could be argued as overhead costs and interest?
Yes, absolutely. And, and I would like to point out that debt does have a place in utility financial planning. For example, if I go back to this $5 million project here in 2016, this was a, and I, and the, the nature of the project slipped my mind, but I believe it was a SCADA. Was that right, David? It was a SCADA project?
It was a well, well improvement project.
Okay, I'm sorry. So it was a single, large well improvement project, which was an anomaly. And when you have these single, large projects that come out of nowhere, it can make sense to debt finance them because they rise above the rest of your normal capital spending. But when you have steady capital spending, that's, that's really not spiked and, and studies you see that what's planned here, there's really, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to debt finance that because you need to get your revenues up to the point where you can afford to finance that type of, of capital spending. It's simply a, a repeated and predictable level of spending that you do every year and to debt finance it is simply pushing off the expenses on, on future rate payers. So I would say that with the, with what you're looking at, with the capital spending coming up, it's really, it's debt financing it could be a way to lower the burden over the next five years, but in the long term, it's, it's not what we would advise.
So at, at the risk of oversimplifying, the scenario you just offered could be arguable to using your credit card to pay your mortgage?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
As opposed to using your credit card to pay for, you know, a, a spa, which, you know, that makes more sense because it's, it's a single expense that only happens once. And so you might want to spend, you spread the costs out over time, but a mortgage happens every single month. So using your credit card to pay for that doesn't make any sense at all.
Council member Cruz?
Yes, Mark, are you, you mentioned that there are some legal requirements. Are those included in your forecast? And how much would those projects be?
So the, the legal requirements are, in terms of this part of the presentation, really the, the extent of the legal requirements is that we don't put a bunch of expenses in here that have nothing to do with providing utility services. So these expenses don't include, you know, funding your police department or your fire department, that type of thing. So in that sense, yes, we, we're meeting all legal requirements in the sense that all of the expenses that you're looking at here are, are entirely to pay for the water utility and nothing else.
May I ask one more thing? In terms of required upgrades, is that also included?
I, I'm going to have to defer to you, David, in terms of the, the content of the capital planning.
Sure, thank you, Mark. And council member Cruz, that's a great question and I definitely would like to bring in our city engineer too to assist as needed with this response. The, the rates do currently reflect those capital improvement projects that our city engineer and our water and wastewater staff identified were critical for continued operation and maintenance of our system. And, and that's reflected, the cost of those projects are reflected in the rates that Mark is presenting. One option for council, however, just to be upfront, is to really take a look at those projects and determine whether you want to put them all in and finance them through the rates or whether there's an opportunity to defer them to a future period of time. Staff did have quite a bit of discussion around that. And as you can see, there was some deferred maintenance over the last, or deferred, you know, capital improvements over the last three, almost four years where there was no, no projects. Therefore, you know, with the continued aging of the plant and the need to make sure that we continue to remain the viability of our water treatment system, we've embedded these capital projects in the rate because we think there's critical to ensure that we're, we're able to continue providing, you know, water services efficiently. But again, maybe, Mark, if you can put on the list of capital projects, we can see that in each fiscal year, there's a very set of projects that again are reflected in the rates. Council could, for example, take a look at any one of those projects and bump it one year or two years. However, I would recommend if we do that, we do it very carefully and in consultation with our city engineer in terms of making sure that any projects that are deferred are, are done so in a strategic manner to ensure we're not impairing our, our water system in any way.
Okay, council members, any other questions at this point? Okay, I, I just have one and it pertains to the pay as you go. If I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's not all pay as you go. I mean, we can cherry pick the projects, of course, that, that we're not going to pay as we go. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Once you continue with your presentation.
Okay. Just to be clear, I, the projects that we did identify to debt finance would be this $3 million project in 2024, which is the chlorine contact tank, the $700,000 transfer pumps and a variety of other, basically most of the projects from fiscal 2025. And part of the purpose is that you, when you issue debt, first of all, you only want to have to issue it once because it is a pretty high level of effort for staff to, to go through that process. And then you need to spend the money within two years. So you have to identify sort of a two-year period where there's a concentration of projects that are, that are good candidates for debt financing. Okay, so another topic that you'll need to consider is the timing of the rate adjustments. Typically, the city adjusts its rates at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1. In this case, we're assuming that the first rate increase will be on July, on January 1, coming up here in, in five months, which would be the midpoint of your fiscal year. The second rate increase would happen at the beginning of the fiscal year, so it would be six months later. And then we'd be back on track to have the rate adjustments happen every year, every July 1. If you decide that you, if that's too, if you decide that that's too soon, that six months later isn't tenable, we did put together a slide to show you what would happen if you wanted to get back on track with the fiscal year, but you decide to delay it until July 1st, 2022, which would be 18 months later. And so you can see that there would be an 11% increase instead of that 10% increase that we mentioned in 2021. And then there'd be no rate increase in 2022 because you'd be skipping that year. And then there would be a 23% rate increase in 2023. And then it would be 10%, 10% and then eight percent thereafter. So it's just the, the financial impact of deferring those rate increases.
Real quick, is there a non-debt strategy with the still delayed increase or are those oxymoronic?
No, no, there, that, that would, that's a, we did not put together that scenario for this presentation, but that would be a possibility and we'd be happy to show that to you at a later date. I don't know if Bob is able to speak or not, or if he can hear me, but that, if, Bob, if you, you might be able to pop open the model and, and run that scenario and be able to provide the answer.
I don't, I don't want to derail your presentation to that level. I was just curious.
Okay. So now we'll, we'll jump into the sewer financial plan. Before I do so, any, any final questions about the water enterprise? And I, you know, I realize these are big numbers. I don't mean to be nonchalant about them. These are large increases, but it is important to, to understand that city staff is doing the right thing by addressing what has been deferred capital spending for, for many, many years and the, the system needs these projects. And there is a price to pay when these projects are deferred for as long as they have been. And unfortunately, you, you have some, some, some larger increases to, to make in order to catch up to the level of spending that should have been going on for quite some time. And as you'll see later on, we'll show you a survey. You'll see that the, the rates that the city currently charges are below the average and the increases won't, won't take you to the, you won't become the most expensive rates in the region either. So here are the, I'll jump into the sewer enterprise. So it's the same structure, same boxes, just different types of rates, sewer rates. So I won't go through all that again. Your beginning fund balance in the sewer enterprise is close to $3 million for unrestricted and close to a million dollars for that restricted revenue for the capacity charges. About 86% of your revenue comes from rate revenue, so very similar profile as water. You also receive that transfer from the general fund to help pay for some of your post-employment benefits. On the expense side, also a similar profile in terms of salaries and benefits and transfers out. In this case, you, you don't have any debt on the sewer side. So that's not an expense that we, that is included on this pie chart. Now, the sewer enterprise is facing a really interesting and frankly, an unfortunate challenge ahead. And that's the fact that the regional water quality control board has notified the city for, for quite some time that the treatment plant may need to be upgraded to provide advanced water treatment, which means essentially that the wastewater needs to be treated to a, a higher level of purity. And that additional train is a, is a very expensive project. You can see, I've circled it out there, it dwarfs all of the rest of your capital spending. So the sewer enterprise is a very similar situation in terms of deferred maintenance. The historical average spending has been only $13,000 per year, which is essentially nothing. And going forward, the fork, the average because of this enormous project would be $13 million per year. For purposes of this study, we are not going to try to fund that, what we're calling the AWT or the advanced water treatment project. You need a 600% rate increase in order to cash finance that project were it to happen in 10 years. Or you need a 325% rate increase in order to debt finance it. The, the thing is that that project may or may not end up being required. There's a lot of indications saying that it will be required, but that's not a guarantee. Things change. And so adopting either of those plans above is, is a bit rash at this point. In addition, the increase in capital spending that you see down here, you're already going to have your plate full just getting up to this level of capital spending, which we'll get into more detail here in a moment. So what we're proposing is that we only focus on all of your other capital spending to get the utilities finances in order so that if and when this project does occur, you're already in a, in a strong financial position that you're able to take care of your existing capital obligations and that you can then focus on whatever the advanced water treatment project ends up being. So that's the, the, the next slides that we show will only be focusing on all of your other capital spending and we're deferring any decision or any rate increases to address that advanced water treatment. Before I go on to the rest of the slides, were there any questions about that?
Council members, any questions? No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. I don't see any.
Sure, thanks. So here are the, the rest of those, if you take away the advanced water treatment project, this is what the other projects look like. And so again, the historical average has been $13,000 and the 10-year forecast average would be about $2 million. This increase here is, is really because of, this is the same level of capital spending, but it includes inflation at about 3%. Here's a list of specific projects that are being proposed. And I did want to highlight some of the projects that are being proposed up part of that list. There's a, an important video and smoke testing of your sewers. Understanding the condition of your sewers makes it far more cost effective to be able to address your system needs. Having that information allows you to target the areas with the highest need. And so that project is, is important and is a, is very cost effective to go through that process. You will need to replace the software on your SCADA. So SCADA is an acronym and it's basically the computer system that runs your treatment plant, allows your operators to sit, sit in the control room and be able to operate the plant. So that software will need to be updated. You do have a pump station that needs to be rebuilt to modern standards. And then you'll have some additional CCTV videoing, which is basically running a video through, through your sewer mains to, again, to evaluate the system condition and be able to use your, use your money as effectively as possible. You have the same reserve structure as with water, so you have a contingency reserve of about $600,000. Your replacement reserve here is about $2 million and your, and then you have your capital fee reserve just based on the revenues that you get from your developers. Here's the scenario that we started out with, with water. I am showing a longer timeframe here because the, the capital program I think is going to be easier to address on, on, in that, this type of view. The reserves will be held for a bit because your capital spending doesn't really ramp up until 2025. And so you really, you can maintain your reserves for a while, but then they'll drop precipitously in 2025. So rather than wait until then, it really would be beneficial to start addressing your revenue requirements now and to make some decisions about starting to increase your rates so that you don't have to hit rate payers with massive rate increases out in 2025. So here is the only proposed scenario that we'll be showing. We do not, we're not showing any debt strategy in this particular case specifically because of that advanced water treatment project. You really don't want to have any debt on your books at all if and when that advanced water treatment project does come to pass because you'll certainly be debt financing it when it, when, if and when it happens. And so the more capacity that the utility has to issue debt, the better. So we really don't see any logical way we could propose issuing debt now with that kind of project looming in the future. So you can see that the cash financing approach would be 15% for two years and then 14% for the next three years. Again, we're proposing a five-year scenario. A year six would be 12% and then we, you'd be able to taper down. And you can see that with this level of cap, once you get to the able to taper down. And you can see that with this level of cap, once you get to the point where your revenues can meet your expenses, your level expenses, you're really these 3% increases are really just adjusting for inflation. And you've you've essentially caught up at that point. So I will pause for questions on the sewer utility.
Council members, any questions at this point? And Irene, I guess I should ask, is there anyone in the waiting room that has any questions at this point?
No hands are currently raised, Mayor.
Mark, thank you. Please continue.
Okay. So when we look at the specific rates that are being proposed on the water side, again, I mentioned that we're not proposing any changes to the rate structure. The cost of service methodology that was used five years ago is a standard methodology that not only meets industry standards, but it also continues to be appropriate for the city's cost structure. So it's a what we call a flat rate or a uniform rate, which means that for the water usage portion, the rate remains the same regardless of the the amount of water as opposed to a tiered rate structure. The current rate would be 475. And this is the the pay go. This is within the the context of the pay go. So this would be this includes the 20% increase to have the wire usage rate go up to $5.78. And then there's the fixed monthly base charge depending on the size of the meter, which would go up by this amount. You can see there is a slight variation here. The usage rates are a little bit higher at 22% than the 20%. And the base charges are a bit lower. And that's simply because the the utilities cost profile is a bit different than it was. So even if you use exactly the same methodology, when you have different costs profile, the results end up being a little bit different. That's just for year one. In years two, three, four, and five, the rate increases would be totally uniform across all the rates would be the same 20% for the usage rates and the base charges. So in the lower right here, we have included a table showing bill impacts for typical accounts. So you can see single family home with low water usage, median, average, and high water usage. You can see what their current bill looks like and what their proposed bill would look like. Again, this is with the 20% increase as the scenario. And you can see the percent change in their bill and almost everybody's hovering right around that 20%, showing that the rate structure hasn't really changed much. This next slide, I won't go through all the numbers, but it shows you what the rates would look like over the five-year period that's being proposed. And here's a survey. So these are all regional utilities. I have put a little X here next to a couple of these. This indicates utilities that own and operate their own water treatment plant. The other option is to receive water fully treated from wholesaler, usually Sonoma County Water Agency is the provider of water. And they Sonoma County has access to clean groundwater and their treatment process is minimal. So that source of water is relatively cheap. So those utilities that have to treat their own water do typically have higher expenses associated with it. So you can see your current rates are below the regional average. And then the proposed rates for year one bump you up to this ranking. But really, very much in line with the other utilities that have their own water treatment plant. The so I guess I'll stop there. I'll pause there for a moment because I'm going to switch over back over to sewer. Any questions about these rates or the proposed rate structure?
Council members, any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
On the great, thanks. On the sewer side, your structure is that you charge per dwelling unit. And so single family pays a little bit more per dwelling unit than multifamily because they tend to have more water usage, indoor water usage associated with them. You can see the non-residential customers pay both a base charge as well as a usage charge. So the usage charge is based on their winter water usage because winter water is almost entirely indoor use and therefore a reflection of I'm sorry. No, this is residential. So this is just their wire usage because non-residential, if they have outdoor wire use, that would be within the irrigation meter. So they have a usage charge based on their water usage. But then depending on the type of account that they are, they'll either be assigned low strength, medium strength, or high strength because it takes more chemicals and more energy to treat higher sewer, higher strength sewage. And customers are paid on average daily attendance. So based on the number of students that they have. Here is the survey of your sewer rates. You can see currently you are far and away the cheapest sewer rates in the region. And even with that 15% rate increase in year one, you remain far and away the cheapest water rates or sewer rates. And yes, you will sort of climb the ladder over the next few years as those rate increases are implemented. But it's also keep important to keep in mind that all of these utilities will be raising their rates as well over that time. So there's a we just show year one because this is how their rates stand currently. But Bob and I work for a lot of these utilities and I can confirm that they're all looking at their rates and they're all making adjustments as well. And here's a five-year schedule of that sewer rate schedule, which you have on your in your packet if you want to look at that in more detail. And then we did one survey to combine the two bills together. If you look at water and sewer combined, you can see the current bill is the lowest in the region. And then the debt finance approach with the water and the pay go approach with the water, but the combined bill puts you still below the middle of the pack here. One last topic to touch on. You do you this is a proposed wire shortage charge. The you had one of these and you have one of these already in place. It is being updated partly because the state has required that all utilities, public utilities, adopt a drought shortage strategy that includes six defined stages with these percentages of assumed reductions in water usage goals. And so we restructured your this policy around those six stages. And really what this does is it describes a short a wire shortage charge, a percent increase to the usage charge that would happen should any of these stages be declared by city council, and also a decrease in capital spending that would happen in these stages in order to basically address the the financial impact of selling significantly less water. And that concludes the presentation. This is a schedule that we can talk about at the end, but I'll answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Well, thank you, Mark. I think you've given us a lot to digest. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to open it up for council members, then I'm going to bring in the public, and then I'll bring it back to the DAS for us to give direction to to our staff. So council members, would you like to chime in or have anything to say on this? Well, I don't see anyone right now. So I want to make sure that I understand a couple of things if I could, Mark. And a couple of these, I already know the answer to. We could increase water without increasing sewer. So we could do one and not the other. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, backing up to the capital improvement and the pay as you go. If we were to I don't know, would we look into the future, maybe three, four, or five years and say, okay, this one, this particular project, we we definitely have to finance and the other one, the other one or two, we could pay as we go? How would we do that? If we would just to cherry pick certain capital improvement projects?
Well, in a sense, we've already done that in the debt strategy approach that you see here because we're not debt financing everything. We're only debt financing 6 million. So you can see that because you have some reserves that existing now that you can draw on, there would be some capital spending here in 2022. We'd really be focusing the capital. And then 2023 just was is planned to be a below average capital spending year anyways. So we really were focusing the capital or the debt financing on 2425 and then picking back where we left off in 2026. So in a sense, that's that's what we did is that we cherry picked what we thought would be the most effective timing and a series of projects to debt finance in order to not overdo it with the debt financing, but to really reduce that immediate impact of rate increases.
Thank you. Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room that have questions about this?
I see Melanie with her hand up.
No hands from the public, Mayor.
Okay. Council members, let's bring it back and and give direction to staff. David, did you want to wrap it up with anything or? Okay, let me find Melanie. Melanie, please.
I'm sorry, guess I I'm sorry. I didn't respond earlier. I was scrolling through looking for my question. I was wondering if Mark, Mark or David could answer the question about the it's the category on there's a sewer and a water enterprise. The sewer one is on page 23, I think, of your presentation under utilities and fuel. They're both six-figure numbers. Can you kind of explain? Can you break that line item down for us? And then kind of just a a follow-up question. I just, you know, wanted to ask the city engineer. And this is this seems to be a result of a very exhaustive capital improvement project analysis. And I just, you know, want to thank staff for all of the hard work that that obviously was necessary to get to let the other Mark do his analysis of the situation. And, you know, I'm not going to delve into the history of, you know, how we got here because we, you know, that doesn't matter at this point. We just we have to move forward. But I was wondering if our city engineer could kind of talk about the important projects that or that because, I mean, clearly, we have mandatory projects, we have needed projects, and then we have nice to have projects. And even just the nice to have project is security fencing, which you know, we could sit here and argue that might not just might that's, you know, that's nice to have until the day that you wish you'd had it. And I think that, you know, basically bouncing from crisis to crisis to crisis, we now maybe need to redefine, you know, nice to have versus necessary. So and then I, you know, so and I'm sorry that it's probably four different questions at this point. And then just to kind of wrap it up, and maybe this is the question for a city manager or assistant city manager is, you know, it seems to me that, you know, we deferred a lot of maintenance for a long time. And we've been holding things artificially low for for whatever reason. And it seems to me that additional development would help smooth out some of these expenses over a larger population. So I guess my question is, is, you know, what role in our decision making for going forward does the a projected increase in population have on our ultimate decision? I mean, are you are you kind of, is there any consideration in this given to, you know, expected growth rates or, you know, prospective new development that that we might have like, you know, or is this just this is how much it's this is how much it would be with our kind of current population when you're when you're giving us the, you know, this is what people's rates kind of are now and what it would look like. So are we just are we looking at it just from if we if we if everything remains the same, this is what the, you know, the shared rates would be? And has any consideration gone into potential new development? I'm sorry, that's that's a lot of questions, but I'm just trying to get my head around. Because honestly, to me, if we're being asked, you know, which payment methodology we're comfortable with, we kind of have to understand, you know, what kind of well, first of all, we have to take into account the economic repercussions of the situation that we're in now. But we also have to look at, you know, what is the real potential for additional development that would spread some of these costs over a slightly larger population? So who wants to go first?
So I'm just going to recap your questions really quick. I think the first one, you asked for a breakdown of some of the costs on slide 23. The next one, you asked Mark Rincon to talk about the the need for some of the capital projects or sort of give an overview of the capital spending for was it water or sewer or both?
Yeah, yeah, both.
Both.
And actually, on, yeah, on slide 23 and the so the sewer and the water, can you kind of define utilities and fuel? And what? Yeah, what that means?
Sure. Okay. Well, I'll cover that one first. So utilities and fuel is predominantly going to be electricity that's used at your wastewater treatment plant. It takes a tremendous amount of electricity to treat wastewater because you have to pump it, which is, you know, water is very heavy. And then you also have to essentially inject bubbles into the aeration system, which takes a lot of pressure and a tremendous amount of electricity. So by most of that cost is the the treatment process for treating water, which is, by the way, why we charge more to high strength customers because they require more energy and chemicals to treat their water. The fuel is going to be a smaller number, which is for the fleet to drive around and whatnot. So that's probably less significant. And I'll kick it over to Mark Rincon or David. I'm not sure which of you will take the questions about the capital spending for water and wastewater.
Why don't I start and then turn it over to our city engineer? And the the capital costs that are included in this rate study were based on projects that staff put together in a capital improvement program. Unfortunately, we didn't have the opportunity to fully present the capital improvement program to council and do a robust discussion on all these projects. But it was necessary to really look carefully at what we drafted to date and reflect those projects in this rate study to ensure that the rates reflect the needed improvement. So we can come back and have either concurrent or future discussions on the on the proposed CIP to help inform this process. But I think what you're seeing here is reflective of the projects that staff identified are key to continued maintenance of the system and operation. I did want to note, and maybe Mark Kilderman, if you can, just for a second, go back to the list of water projects. So one of the key projects here is water enterprise capital spending is the new worksheet is the new well. And that's a project, for example, that if there was new no new development planned, we may be able to consider eliminating that as a capital improvement project. However, we recognize that in order to ensure that there's adequate water However, we recognize that in order to ensure that there's adequate water supply to serve any future new development, you know, a new well is the key project. And so, you know, that's where I think the tie-in and connection to growth and development happens. One question, I guess, for Mark Hildbrand is looking at that particular project, if it's allocated, the cost of that is allocated fully to rates? Or is there a cost share with development impact fees so that new new development would help assist with the, the cost of that particular project? And I just didn't know what to pan on the question.
So it would appear for that project, the new well, there is a portion of it that is allocated to developers here that you can see here on on this portion of the graph. So we did identify how much of that well could be considered to be a growth-related project. So that's the distinction that I didn't get into earlier. But those impact fees or developer fees can only be used for projects that expand the project, or sorry, expand the capacity of the system. And so in that particular case, while the new well was deemed to be partially rehabilitation, it also contributed to expanding the water resource.
And then Mark, if you can address Councilmember Bagby's comments about the particular priority of the projects and why the projects that were included on the list and ultimately cost of which was identified in the rate study, you know, kind of some of the logic behind some of these projects. I think that would be informative for council.
Yeah, and Mark, if I could just jump in and just clarify, I'm assuming that when you say mandatory, that it is a state mandate, is, am I correct in that assumption? Or it's mandatory in that the system will fail if we don't do it?
It's a combination of both. You know, obviously the state's not going to tell you to re-coat your reservoir, but it'll get to a point where water quality becomes impacted, then it becomes a state issue. So you try, you try to avoid these situations where your, the state's coming down on you because you've forgotten or you've neglected to do some, some basic maintenance. And, and the reason why coating, this is interior coating more than anything else, is very specialized work, is specialized in terms of the equipment used and also the material used to re-coat a reservoir. And some of these, you know, the priority levels, I worked with the operators on these. Of course, for them, everything was like absolutely necessary, nothing's, you know, just desirable. But we had to, you know, bring some reality into some of these because if everything was necessary, it all get front-loaded. And so obviously, like you said, the security fencing is important, but we can push that off a few years and do the stuff that have higher priorities.
But I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but another example that I just sort of flagged for myself was, you know, covered parking. Well, but if covered parking gives us an opportunity to do solar panels, because, you know, we've mixed solar panels as, or the floating solar panels is being optioned for us, then that's a way to address some of the energy and utility costs. So that's just kind of, you know, when we're, when we do get down in the weeds and talk about some of these, some of these items on the capital improvement project, I just kind of want to be, have a way where we can say that, well, maybe it's a desirable, but if we had an opportunity to do, for example, solar panels on the parking structure, then if a grant came along where we could get some money for panels, then that would bump up that priority. So I just, you know, want to have the ability to make some of those, those priority levels, you know, a little bit movable.
Understood.
Okay. Is there, yeah, and is there anything else on this list like that, that, you know, if an opportunity came along or that would, would make it rise to the, to a higher priority level?
At this point, we're still kind of putting the, the, the capital improvement together right now. We're just looking at how we're going to finance it. But we're still working through the, through the nuance of the updating our capital improvement program. And we will be looking at things like that. But in terms of solar panels, I know that's the, the, the way to go. Anytime you put it on a roof, but the offset costs are minimal unless it's grant-funded because the operational costs for electricity are far outweigh any solar panel that you can put in, unless you have like, you know, a thousand acres to put in a solar farm, then, then we're talking, you know, economics.
Thank you.
And if Councilmember Bagby and Mayor Councilmembers, one of the items that staff was requesting your input on is whether to bring forth rates that reflect the PEGO strategy versus the debt strategy. And one thing I did want to share with council, and I think it gets to the question that you raised, Councilmember Bagby, is that the PEGO strategy does provide the council, I think, a little bit more flexibility in terms of being able to adapt quickly to changes. Whereas the debt strategy, once you've incurred that debt expense and you have that, that principal and interest payment, it's not so easy to readapt your priority projects if you, if you use the debt strategy. Now, I'm not trying to say that is an argument why you should use PEGO. It just, I think it does, or why you shouldn't use the debt strategy. But I think it does affect the, your ability to be flexible and adaptable a little bit to particular circumstances that may arise where there's a benefit maybe to pursuing a, like, let's say a solar project that presents itself. So that may be one consideration that council may want to take into account relative to whether you want to do a, a PEGO strategy versus a debt strategy. And I'll look to Mark i- if, just to ensure that my comment that I'm sharing with council is accurate and reflective of, of, you know, the statement.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, David. Councilmembers, are there any more questions?
Are you, do you want questions or do you want opinions?
Okay. Irene, did you say somebody wanted to?
Hello?
Mary Ann, please share with us.
Okay, I'm just waiting for your okay.
Well, you know, I can't, I can't see everybody all at once, so.
Yeah, I know. So we've kind of known this was coming for quite a long time. We've held off and held off. But one of the basic things that as a city we have to provide for the people that live here is good water and a way to treat our sewage. So we've held off as long as we can, obviously maybe slightly too long. So, and I don't like the debt idea. I think we just have to bite the bullet and do the PEGO system. If we can step it a little bit, that would be great. But if we can't, we're just going to have to bite this bullet and make sure that we can give all the citizens of this town good fresh water and a way to get rid of our sewage. So I'm for the PEGO.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Melanie, why don't you share with us what your preferences are?
You know, I'm actually really not ready to make a decision tonight, Gus, as I thought we were going to talk about this a little bit longer.
Okay.
Just looking at the timeline, I thought we were going to have another meeting to discuss this. Did I, was I incorrect?
Maybe I'm just jumping the gun a little bit.
Well, if I may.
Yeah. Mark, yeah, what was the timeline?
Yeah, we're not asking for a decision tonight, but what we would like is if you have any requests or any thing that you'd like to see presented differently or more detailed or whatnot, now's the time to let us know about your concerns so that when we come back on September 9th, we're going to be showing you our final recommendations. And we will be asking you to make a decision at that point.
I have a request.
Councilmember Turner?
So Mark, as I mentioned before about seeing a a model for what the PEGO structure could look like without doing six-month subsequent rate increases.
Sure.
That would be very important to me. And just for the sake of my colleagues, the reason being is Murphy's Law has shined on us again to where here we are kind of backed into a figurative corner about what the next 10 years looks like for our water and sewage. Going through a tremendous economic downturn. So I'd like to see what my options are for deferring some of the rate increases over a larger period of time and what that could turn into. The other thing I'd like to put on staff's radar is it could be a good idea to ensure the livelihood of our water grant program. There will be people who, regardless of our best intentions, this rate increase will be a hardship. And I'd like to see that we have a program in place to absorb some of that. And that's my request for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Councilmember Cruz, would you like to add to this?
Actually, I have a question for Mark Hildbrand. And when it comes to the debt program, how are the rates at this point? And are there any specific or favorable rates for utilities?
Yeah, so rates are at a historic all-time low at this time. The debt can come in different forms and I'm not bonds advisor, so I can't give advice on what type of debt the city should pursue. But I can tell you that there's what's called general obligation bonds, which are basically based on the credit worthiness of the city as a whole. There's revenue bonds, which are based on pledging revenues from your water, your sewer rates. And then there's SRF loans, which are state revolving fund. And those are essentially subsidized by the state or by the federal government. And those are even lower rates. We've seen some very low rates. SRF loans are harder to get, it's a longer process and you're not guaranteed to get it. So if you're on a timeline and you can't just wait and hope that it happens, then I would assume that you would pursue either a revenue bond or a geo bond or something similar. The rates are about 3% and sometimes lower interest rates. I've heard of extreme cases of below 2%. But I think that takes a special situation, but they are lower than, than we've seen ever. So it is a decent time to borrow, but it doesn't change the dynamic that you're, you're deferring costs to a later time.
Thank you. And we, we have to be very aware that obviously it has been neglected. It's an issue that has been neglected in Cloverdale. And at this point, people need to understand that either we take care of the infrastructure because the federal government is not helping in that and we have to take care of it ourselves. And we have to continue to look for, for grants and so on. I also understand that we do need to have some assistance to some of the people who would encounter hardship. But we also have to keep in mind, you know, people make choices. Sometimes people pay $200 for phones or for cable. And they complain when they have to pay $70 for water. So this is something that we see across the board when it comes to utilities and so on. So we need to be very cautious and responsible on how we address this. But we cannot allow our system to continue to be in, in poor condition because it hasn't been looked at. So it's time for us to bite the bullet.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I wouldn't paint the situation quite as drabby as you do to say neglected. You know, we have managed always to, to make sure that that water was quality coming through there. It's always about financing as, as you see right here. And the tolerance and acceptability of rate increases to the community. So, yeah, there was things that weren't done right away, but hopefully we'll get them done this time. And if not, then, then we'll get them done next time. So.
Well, we need to remember.
So if I understand it correctly, then it'll be coming back on the 9th with the final recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one comment?
And Councilmember Cruz, did you want to say something?
Yes, please.
Okay, please.
I'm saying that, you know, there are going to be some, some federal and state mandates that we have to comply with. And that's where the big expense comes in. It's not necessarily what's necessary or what people want, it's just what is mandated and essential. And yes, we've had good water, it's just the infrastructure hasn't been hit top.
Yeah, very expensive and you know that as well as I do.
I also encourage everybody in council to take a tour to see how it is that it happens. I mean, I just took a tour not long ago. And it's just, oh my gosh, how much do you pay and what are you using? And, and we need to have that full understanding of what the process is and what the equipment is and what is required so that we can explain to our constituents why it is that we need to have a rate increase and.
I agree with you 100% and, and you know, still boggles my mind that we can run that water plant with just three employees and they do such a wonderful job. And, you know, that's my hats off to them and, and Mark Rincon for making sure everything keeps running. So with that being said, David, do you have direction? Okay, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one public comment hand raised from Todd Lance. Mr. Lance, you should be able to speak.
Okay, thank you for having me. For some reason, my camera is not working on this Zoom meeting like it normally does. So thank you, councilmembers and staff for listening to me tonight. I agree with Councilmember Mary Ann Brigham regarding the infrastructure that we need to do this, this is definitely necessary. I just had a couple of quick questions for clarification. Councilmember Bagby asked about the growth in town in the future and if these numbers were part of that when you had the water capital spending forecast. And David Kelly pointed out the 1.246 million for a new well. I was also wondering if because of that growth that you would expect with the new well, if that is what kicked in for the second chlorine contact tank? And then under the year six and beyond, the water main replacement, there was at a 9.7 million. Because that's half of the water forecast within those two items. I'm wondering if they are related to directly in correlation with the growth? Or if they are items that we are just putting out a little bit further? If you need me to repeat them, they are the second chlorine contact. It's listed under your want to purchase. Very good. And then the second one was year six and beyond for the water main replacement, the 9.7 number. And I'm just kind of curious on if those two are necessary if we don't have the growth of the the future projects that are on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Mark, would you like to address that question? Yes.
Yes. Oh, yeah, I would like to go ahead and address that. The new well is, is not necessarily for growth. As wells age, they do deteriorate. They produce less and so you'll find yourself either redeveloping the well or placing a new well just to enhance the supply. So it's a combination of both growth and deterioration of the existing wells in terms of production. In terms of pipelines, yeah, those need to be replaced. Obviously, we, you know, a systematic approach to replacing pipelines every 50 or 75 years is what's really needed. And again, the system was built, but never, no significant pipelines have been replaced since the inception of the system. So we've got some pretty aged pipelines out there. since the inception of the system. So we've got some pretty aged pipelines out there. And, you know, God forbid, we get an earthquake as well. We'll find out where the vulnerabilities are. But we have to become more systematic in replacing our pipelines.
And if I can add on the, I think, specific to Mr. Lance's comment, the water main replacement is really intended to address the existing system where there's existing water lines. So that's that's not necessarily a new development. Because new development will be required to install at least new lines that serve their project. They don't necessarily replace, you know, existing lines, unless it's absolutely necessary to connect. But Mark Rincon, maybe you can also touch on the second chlorine contact.
Right. The chlorine contact tank has been in service now going on 40 years, the existing one. And we have absolutely no redundancy. The contact tank, as shown in the photograph, there is is in dire need of upgrade. You can see it there. It's the lower left. And so, you know, the exterior looks great because the guys are painting it all the time. But the interior, you know, God forbid, I don't want to show it out to anybody, but you know, we do need to get that recoded. The only way you get it recoded is taking it out of service. And we really can't take it out of service at this point without having a redundant system in place. So it's more for redundancy. It was an oversight that's been long neglected. And so having that redundancy is absolutely critical.
Thank you, Mark and David and Mark Hildbrand. Just real quick to clarify. If we didn't have that growth foreseeable in our near future, would these items be such a hard hit to the community over the next five years?
Yeah, no, the the revenue that you'll get from your developers is really not going to materially change the the level of spending that's required to to rehabilitate the the system.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So if I.
Sorry about that. I'm kind of getting feedback here. Are there any other questions? Irene, do you see anything else out there?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Staff, do you feel that you have any direction at this point?
Well, Mayor, I think I think it's just important to note that based on the schedule, you know, we did want to have a little bit more definitive answers, I think, at this meeting so we could really bring forward a relatively complete product or recommendation to the council on the ninth. But I'm sensing council needs more information and we will do our best to be able to address that information request. In order to meet this schedule, it will be necessary to provide final recommendations on the ninth so we can then set the rates, pose rates and adhere to the Prop 218 noticing requirements, which is a 45 day notice and be able to conduct a public hearing on the 11th. I mean, I guess the key feedback we were seeking from council was, again, whether you'd like us to either defer or eliminate capital improvement projects. I think you heard tonight that many of those projects are very, very vital. But we can certainly see between now and next meeting if we can smooth out the expenses. The other issue is and whether there's consensus on is we did hear there's some sentiment towards the pay as you go strategy versus debt issuance. And if, you know, we were able to to focus on that as if there's kind of general consensus, then if you kind of eliminate the debt strategy and really bring it back, I think it would get also get to Vice Mayor Turner's comment. And then there's there's also just the timing issue, which is is kind of twofold. Again, if there's any direction to staff on the schedule for the public hearing to consider those new rates. I mean, obviously, council could say, you know what, we we don't want to consider these rates at this time. We think that has, and as Mark Hildbrand presented, has its own impacts. It kind of kicks the can down the road. Costs go up and it results in more significant cost increases later. So we generally don't recommend that. But then there's also the timing issue of when the rates would would take effect, whether it's, you know, January 1 and again, July 1. Or do you, you know, you want to wait till July 1 of next year and get back on schedule? Because that also has an impact on the rates. And I think the presentation reflects that we were trying to do it in a way that, you know, as best as we can under this scenario, kind of smooth out that impact to our consumers and our businesses and residents. But I don't know, Mark, if there's any other things that you think is critical for us to get feedback on at this point because the next meeting on the ninth, the agenda reports are due for that. And we'll be posting up the agenda literally next week. So we're just slightly a week away from being able to, you know, kind of come back to council with final recommendations.
Okay. Vice Vice Mayor Turner had a question.
Yeah, one more thing. So for the, so one of the things that you asked us for feedback on is considering the capital improvement projects and whether we want to defer any or eliminate them altogether. Mr. Rincon, if I could ask, is there a way that for each of the capital improvement projects, I get a pro and a con? And what I mean by that is is water main replacement at year six and beyond. The pro is we are more earthquake safe and we have an up to date product that is compliant and within the 50 year lifespan that's I'm just pulling stuff out of thin air based on what you were speaking. And then what is the con if we don't do it? You mentioned risk of earthquake. Melanie brought up a really good point about the covered parking. The pro is there could be an opportunity for for solar if we were to say move that up or things of that nature. What's the con if we don't do it? It falls down and starts crushing stuff we own? I mean, I just what is my risk versus gain with with each of those projects? Do you think you and the and the staff have enough info to where I'm not asking you to reinvent the wheel with that list to just kind of offer one extra column in that regard?
Well, we've been through this list pretty exhaustively with the operators and and with, you know, we're working with GHD on developing the costs for all these capital improvements. So, you know, it's it hasn't been put together. The only thing I I put on it is a reality because, you know, obviously the operators would like to get everything done as soon as possible. But then there's the financial reality which we're going through right now. So we've kind of already postponed some of the projects that we thought we could do earlier. And then David brings up a very valid point too, is that we just don't have the staffing capacity to manage such a large project portfolio. So that's another issue that we factored into trying to spread these projects out at a reasonable level so that, you know, A, we can fund them and B, we can deliver them. So that's that was the whole point. So we've kind of massaged this quite a bit already. And, you know, pipeline replacements, that should be an ongoing program. There's there's no doubt that pipelines need need to be replaced. There is a, you know, a lifetime to these pipelines. And a lot of the materials that were used earlier are not are not appropriate today. So we wouldn't be using that same same kind of pipe material. So it's it's an ongoing. It's a balancing act. I realize that because there's there's the issues dealing with the finances. And so we've carefully spread these costs out to the best of our ability. And we have yet to inform GHD. This is the money we have. Let's make it work.
I, one more thing, and forgive me if this comes across as argumentative. It is not at all my intention. But one of the things that staff has asked us to do, relook at that list. And what you're kind of explaining to me is you guys have condensed that list down the absolute best that you can. So what impact could I actually have on relooking at what your projects are doing if you're telling me you've already condensed it down?
It would probably put us to like business the way we've been doing it and just keep postponing infrastructure. And that that's a policy decision. We can continue to delay, you know, these costs. But then overall, there's going to be a more significant cost impact to the system when we have to replace systems that have been further deteriorated. So that's that's just it, you know, either pay up now or or like, you know, what was mentioned earlier, kick the can down down the road and hopefully nothing goes wrong.
Thanks, Mark. I appreciate it. This is not an easy topic. Thank you.
Well, bringing it back to the council, there's a few questions and I think directions we have to give staff. First of all, the I guess the first one is, are we comfortable with the capital improvement projects? And do we want them to move forward with them? David, is that pretty much correct or?
Mayor, that's that's accurate.
So with that being said, let me let me just go down the line and see. Councilmember Bagby, how do you feel about that?
Oh, yeah, I I guess like probably you should clarify my statement. I am absolutely ready to adhere to the the timeline as it is in front of us. I absolutely think that we have to move forward with these capital improvement projects. We just, we, these are projects that just that cannot wait. What I just want to be able to do is kind of get my mind around the benefits. And, you know, the the pros and cons of the financing plans, maybe talk to some of the members of the public, just kind of see where people are at, since this is just such a, you know, dynamically changing time and then just make the best decision. I mean, because I just find myself going back and forth between what we were just talking about, which was, you know, if you go pay as you go, you can be a little bit more limber, a little bit more flexible. But financing also has its advantages. So I just want to have a little bit of time to kind of get my head around what what I prefer. But I I definitely think we need to move forward with this because what I'm seeing here is that our rates have been kept artificially down and we are not being realistic about, you know, what our needs are. And we need to start investing in our infrastructure, you know, for this community's future. So I'm absolutely ready. I'll be ready to make a decision according to the timeline that is presented. I just, but I do, I appreciate kind of it being introduced and being a little, having a little bit of time to think about what the best option is given our current circumstances.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham?
I absolutely think we have to pay attention to our infrastructure and this is a basic need of every citizen in this town. And we need to move forward. This is not, those capital improvement projects are not etched in stone. I mean, if there is some kind of an emergency, we can maybe put them off for a few months, but not more than that. We've been kicking it down the can down the road now for the last few years because of the economy and everything that's going on. We cannot wait any longer. We have to move forward. And I am, I don't really like using a lot of loans to make this happen. I know we'll have to if we're ever forced to do a tertiary system. But I'm for going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Rincon?
Yeah, just a word of caution too, that these are order of magnitude cost estimates. These are not actual project costs. So it's just cautionary too, that we may have to delay some of these projects when we get bids and we see, oh, my God, it's triple what we thought or double what we thought because of whatever reason. So it's just a word of caution that, you know, we have a timeline, we have our our projects. Things may get pushed back because of the reality of bids.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I definitely would like to see these projects go forth. And just like Councilmember Bagby, I would like to feel more comfortable on making a financial decision.
Okay. And Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, so I find myself leaning more towards the pay as you go rather than using the funds of our ratepayers to service interest where where we can avoid it. I look forward to coming back on the ninth and really get to the weeds over over some of those projects and whether we want to the area permanent or whether we want to err on on the side of caution with what Mark was describing, what might cost us $100 today could cost us $1,000 tomorrow if we prefer. But I don't have much interest in the model that services debt. I think I'm drawing a blank on the title that was used toward it. I definitely have much more of an interest in the pay as you go structure.
Thank you. And I'm just going to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Turner said. I want to move forward with the capital improvement projects. And and at this point, I'd prefer to go with a pay as you go. If 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 we have to adjust that later on down the road, we probably could. But more important, staff, do you have enough direction to come back on the on the ninth? Or do you want us to try and fine tune it some more?
I I think the direction that you've shared with staff and our consultant, Mark Hildbrand, is is adequate. Mark, I I'll look to you if there's anything missing that you you think is critical, that we need feedback on from council to be able to be prepared to ensure we can bring back final recommendations on the night or you think we're good to go.
I think we're good to go. You know, I mean, I think we'll still be presenting some iterations, you know, some different scenarios, the doing the rates, doing the second rate after six months rather than 18 months. It looks like we're going to have to show that. So we're not going to be able to show up on the ninth with a final, final recommendation. There'll still be decisions to be made. But I think we've narrowed it down that it's going to be a pretty efficient conversation and you know, we do need to get that 218 notice in the mail shortly thereafter, but we can have it drafted up to the point where it's really just a matter of dropping in the rates and most of the content what can be developed ahead of time. So that shouldn't inhibit us too much.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Council members, I'm going to move on if if no one has anything else to say. Very good. Mark, thank you for coming in, doing your presentation. Quite enlightening, a lot to think about, a lot of work to be done with a city that has no funding. So but we'll get through it. I mean, you know, we've managed to provide water and sewer services over the last 100 years to our community and we'll get it done. And Mark Rincon, thank you for your detailed capital improvement project list. Very thorough and thank you for being honest with us about having to get this stuff done right away. With that being said, why don't we take a five minute break if we could? And then when we come back, if everybody's agreeable, I would like to make a slight change to the agenda. Sitting here at the Performing Arts Center, we have Nina and Savannah from the chamber. So I'd like them to give their presentation first if no one objects, so we could kind of cut them loose. So why don't we go ahead and take a five minute break? And we'll reconvene. Thank you. If you have your audio on and you can join us back, that'd be great. Thank you, G. Kevin, thank you. Okay, I see Melanie, I see Mary Ann. I see, I don't see Councilmember, I see Councilmember Turner. Modern, oh, here she comes. Okay, and Councilmember Cruz is here. So why don't we go ahead and reconvene the meeting? And thank you for allowing me to move up the chamber. And with that being said, we are on item number seven, Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce Funding Agreement for Fiscal Year 2021. Nina?
Irene, can you get the mic for them?
With the chamber. David, I'm sorry, weren't you supposed to introduce?
That's all right.
Nina, before you get started, I'm going to back up a minute, and I neglected to turn this item over to David, tell you our city manager.
Sorry.
David?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Make sure I have, I'm off mute. Okay, I'm off mute. All right. This item this evening is a professional services agreement between the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce and the City of Cloverdale. The professional services agreement is related to the ongoing services that the chamber provides for the city, on behalf of the city, and includes really three key functions, which includes chamber accessibility and staffing, and there are operations at our visitor center, which is to have availability for our visitors to come and say hi to Cloverdale and be able to direct them to our business community. The scope of work also includes business outreach and economic development, and then last but not least, marketing promotion and advance. And I know both our chamber director, Nina Hanchett, and Savannah Hemphill tonight are going to give an overview on all three of those proposed tasks that are included in the scope of work that they've provided to the city. The intent is, or the request is, to approve the professional services agreement with a budget of $65,000. That's a slight increase in the request from the previous year, but is reflective of the ongoing work that the chamber has been performing. And I like to say that our chamber team here really is an extension of city staff. It's our economic development team, and often say to them that it's about Team Cloverdale. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to our chamber director, Nina Hanchett, and Savannah, to walk us through a presentation of their program tonight.
I know you've seen aspects of this before. We take the PowerPoint and we kind of update it so that you have an idea of what we're doing, and if you don't, you know whose door to come through. Knock first, we'll come out and let you in. Okay, so let's go to the first page of accomplishments. Oh.
Actually, with the agenda, I mean?
It's not clicking. Am I too far away? Maybe we have to do it a bit left. Okay. So if you'll skip that page and then go to the next page, that would be great. So we continue to work with, perfect. We continue to work and improve and enhance our relationship with the City of Cloverdale as we serve as the city's marketing and promotion arm. David said Team Cloverdale, and that's kind of how we look at it. It's hard to tell where one stops and the other starts. In doing that, we promote Cloverdale, we help residents, we help businesses, we get them to the right place at the right time, and we work really hard to make that happen because we want not only our residential community to be happy and have the services they need, but we also want our businesses to know that they're being heard. So one of the simple aspects of doing this is we developed a new resident bag program. It's been going on about a year, and it has all kinds of different things in the chamber bag. We have a letter from the mayor, we have a letter from the chamber, we have business promotional information, we have restaurant menus, we have brochures, we have Sonoma County travel information, so that people that are new to Cloverdale will get a sense of what honey pot they've landed in. So, and those go out every month. We send them to new residents, excuse me, new homeowners, but we also work with our property managers to find who the new tenants are as well. We can either take them or they can take them to their door. We're on hiatus for a couple of months because of shelter in place and COVID, but we got, what did we do, March, April, May, and June, March, April, May, June, and July. So the next slide is talking about business and community accomplishments. I think if I put on everything that we do, first of all, you'd be bored to tears, secondly, you'd be here until midnight, but I could go on and on, and I often do. So one of the first visuals that we started doing is 365 days of Experience Cloverdale on our Instagram page, which is Experience Cloverdale.
And Facebook.
And Facebook, and Nextdoor. And every day of the week, we post either a one photo or a series of photos highlighting the people, businesses, events, the beauty of Cloverdale, things that are going on when they do go on, and our community. Social media reach has averaged about 34,000, over 34,000 views a month, including our website, Facebook, and Instagram, based on the data that was collected. And since February, and I think COVID and shelter in place had a lot to do with it, it's really, it's really exploded. It's a lot of comments, another way to reach people and our, and our community. Sidewalk sale, we had a sidewalk sale on Saturday, and once you put your, once you put it up there, you can't really, it's difficult that you can pull it back in light of the fires and what is kind of happening on our horizon. The morning was beautiful and perfect weather, perfect day, despite got cloudier and cloudier. But what I did was I informally talked to the merchants that participated, one of whom said she did way better than she did last year in spite of the fires and the smoke. I just did an email asking the other people to give me the, give me some information on how they felt about it, what we could do differently next time, given we can't control the weather, the fires, the COVID, that we can't control much. So. Oh, did I? Much fun to skip. Oh, okay, sorry. So with COVID-19 and the pandemic, we shifted our focus a lot. Rather than event and promotion driven to the outside world, we kind of used our resources and our time in order to reach Cloverdale residents and our business community. We put together right away, and businesses that were open during COVID took the original shelter in place when nobody knew what was going on. We updated it all the time on daily basis to let people know what businesses were open and what, and how they were serving their customers. We also have, as the pandemic has, as the months have passed, we have been focusing on different aspects of keeping the community safe and hopefully putting this thing to rest. We did window posters for every, every business. Some people put them up, some people put them inside, where we asked people in Spanish and English to wear their masks. That was, that was a real important emphasis on a lot of the COVID promotion that we were doing. We also, we also have done, started doing videos during, the pandemic started mid-March, where we focused on the businesses that were open in Cloverdale, serving customers, serving Cloverdale, and how they were doing it. And it was great, they're about two minutes long, and the average views, it's amazing, it's well over 800. So we wanted, the shift, the focus has shifted a bit in that during the pandemic, during the initial phases of shelter in place, we wanted people to know the businesses were open. Well, now our focus is, is to let people know, the residents and the other businesses in Cloverdale know what businesses are here that will continue to serve them, pandemic or no pandemic. So that's what we're doing now. We've done about, it says 40 brief, we've actually done about 43, and we've got a couple more scheduled. They're a lot of fun. Oh, we also did two mask videos, where we just took cameos of people in their masks, city leaders, we did business owners, we did businesses and customers, and that was, they were really very popular. Okay, then the next slide talks about Halloween, and this is interesting, because this PowerPoint I sent to David on Monday. On Tuesday, we had a meeting with people that are helping us put something together for Halloween, and it's not going to be kids walking downtown getting trick-or-treats. It's going to somehow be a neighborhood parade, where we'll have, we'll have cars and people and going around the neighborhoods, getting candy and that kind of thing. We also are working on a video, sorry, a drive-in movie at the Citrus Fair, Halloween night. So those are all works in progress. So I just, anything that we set out to do, we also know that with, given this situation and the things we have really no control over, we're going to punt, we're going to figure it out and make it work. Hopefully, the community will appreciate that. You have anything more to say about Halloween? We want to somehow include Dia. We're trying to find a name that makes it all work together, so that, so that we have Halloween, we have Dia de Halloween, Y los Muertos, I don't know if that works or not, but we're working on it. And then, some of these people you might know, they're your neighbors and friends.
Yes.
So this, David and Gus were part of our masking video, same with Kathleen Madeline Stewart from Kelly &amp; Young, there were a number of others. And then what's coming up, we're still working on our experience wall on the side of the Arcelon building. We're going to have the geographic coordinates and have a place for people to take selfies and/or know that they're in Cloverdale. We're also working on other walls in Cloverdale, business walls, so that they're not just in one place. And the welcome signs are still happening. Roger Fletcher, who is the owner of Fletcher Fabrication, has been really, really working hard on these signs, and he's also a firefighter, he's an engineer with the Cloverdale Fire District. So the pandemic, the fires, have kind of put that aside, but I know that they are at the powder coating stage right now, and the pieces are there, we just need to assemble and put them in place. And also, we're working on council Saturday forums for, pick a date, in September and October, to allow the people that are, that want to have a seat at this dais to tell the community why they're the ones to choose. So, questions?
Thank you, thank you, Nina. Very nice presentation. I'm going to open it up to city council members, then I'm going to bring it to the public, and then we'll bring it back to the council for final questions. City council members, any, any questions of Nina or our city manager on this item? Let me just go down the list here. Councilmember Cruz, you got your hand up? Please.
Yes. Okay, I guess I need to turn off the mics. Okay.
Wait one second, Councilmember Cruz.
Okay.
Did you mute me? Okay, please.
Thank you. Yeah, the $65,000, the original request, correct?
It was $70, Mark. You're muted now, Nina, I'm sorry. Savannah, you might have to...
That's what she does. Councilmember Cruz? We, the chamber originally asked the city for $75,000, and based on a lot of different factors and all the other organizations that were, came to the table as well, the agreement was for 65,000. came to the table as well, the, the agreement was for $65,000, which is still several thousand dollars more than last year. So I went away feeling very good about that and, and hoping to help move this into 2020, 2021 with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Okay, seeing no other council members raised their hands right now. Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room that wants to share a few words?
No hands are currently raised, Mayor.
Well, I'd just like to bring it up to, back to the dais again. You know, I, I really think during these difficult times, the chamber has done an excellent job helping the city get through this maze of one disaster after another, and they've really been a good partner. I know Nina takes a lot of brunt from the community. She took it last year when we had a discussion about our fireworks, and she's fielding calls all the time from businesses about what, what should they be doing during this pandemic. And Nina, I just can't thank you enough for all the work that you and your board does. With that being said, council members, does anyone have more questions or another comment? Councilmember Brigham?
No, I don't really have any questions, I just would like to echo what you said. This has been a difficult time for everybody, and especially the businesses in town. And I think the reaching out that Nina has done and has really helped fill that gap, and I wouldn't want to be on the other end of the phone as, like Nina is. So thank you for what you guys do.
Let me make a quick comment here, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
It's been fantastic partnering with you guys, and one, one of the biggest things that I found myself reflecting on recently is, I've commonly heard it referred to, that a company, a city leader, anybody involved, their greatest assets are their people, and you two are absolutely phenomenal. There's been more than one occasion where a business owner may have an idea or a pipe dream that they want to try and get off the ground, and I send them your way. Rock Day Adventure is one, I send them your way. And you know, he had just some really fun, creative ideas, and I couldn't think of anybody better than you two to bounce that stuff off of. And I find you to be a phenomenal resource to us and this city as a whole, so thank you for your continued efforts. If I could have, I'd have happily given you $75,000. Thank you for making this work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Turner. Well, if there's nothing else, council...
Sorry? Mr. Mayor, if I, if I would?
Melanie, please.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo the support for this item. I think that Nina and Savannah have gone above and beyond the call of duty. I don't, you know, not only do they, you know, deserve for us to pass this resolution tonight, they each deserve medals for being in the trenches and just doing such amazing, creative, and brave work. I mean, they're just like two of the nicest, bravest, fiercest, they just kill you, they, with their fierce kindness. And, you know, that's, unfortunately, that's just become part of the job and what's required of, you know, all of us right now, is just being fiercely kind and helping people find ways to navigate through something that, you know, none of us were prepared for. And, you know, but kind of, kind of on that note, you know, just the direction that they took the chamber's marketing in, which was, and a lot of that is, a lot of the credit that should also go to Janess Brewer for really innovating, innovating the marketing plan, having that really amazing Facebook and Instagram presence, the, the hashtags, the, you know, daily Instagram stuff, that kind of all goes back to that original marketing plan. And it, it's really proven its value, and it's important and it's worth, because they were able to take that really great marketing plan and pivot to what we needed it to be during COVID. So I think that just shows that that was money very well invested, very well spent, and I wish, I wish it could be more that we could support them with, but this is just, you know, realistic for our, our budget right now. But they really do, you know, have my full support and my, my gratitude for, you know, really being a conduit between us and the business owners. And yeah, we might have to do better than a resolution or proclamation and give them, find, figure out how to award medals to, to them both. So, you know, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be honored to offer the resolution, if I may.
I had a quest, a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, please.
Yes, I also want to say thank you to Nina, because it's not only servicing the community in promoting Cloverdale, but it's also in promoting organizations. And they have been able to be a great support for some of our cultural committee finances for transparency. So any monies that comes, you know, we go through the chamber, and that's been a great service. Thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and to be your on-call translator.
Thank you. Anyone else before Councilmember Bagby offers the resolution? Okay, Melanie, please.
Yeah, offer the resolution by title only. Oh, this is a long one, I should have left this for Jason, let's see. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a professional service agreement between the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce and the City of Cloverdale for three broad economic development tasks, including, one, chamber accessibility staffing operations, two, business outreach and economic development, and three, marketing promotion and events in fiscal year 2020 through 2021, and authorizing the city manager to execute on behalf of the city.
And that was seconded by, I think, Councilmember Brigham? Can we have a roll call, please, Irene?
Yes. Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
All right, don't spend it all in one place.
Thank you, thank you, Nina, thank you. And convey that to the board, please. We appreciate their work. Okay, let's get back on the agenda, and we're gonna go back up to the consent calendar, if we could, please. So all items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless a member of the public or a member of the city council wishes to have an item removed and considered separately. Would someone like to make that motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Approved by Brigham, seconded by Turner, and could we have a roll call, Irene?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
She's saying aye.
Yes, Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the communications, any communications that we should be discussing?
Mayor, members of council, no, no, no communications were received after the posting of the agenda packet.
Thank you. Did we already do public comment?
We did that in the beginning.
Okay.
For our presentation.
All right. Next is public hearings. And the first item, item number six, is the approving an initial study mitigated negative declar, declaration of the Bumgarner Residential Project.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
Assistant City Manager Thompson. Councilmember Cruz, were you gonna recuse?
Yes, and I also couldn't hear you very well, because I guess everybody's phone, uh, mic was on.
And I can't hear you very well. What are you saying?
I said I recused myself, and I was not able to hear everything you said, because it was breaking up.
Okay.
So what do I do, Jose? I leave the meeting and come back at a...
No, you could, you, you, Councilmember, you can just turn off your camera and not participate in audio or visuals, you could just turn off your camera, and that's, that's the same as you leaving the dais. And just for the record, Councilmember Cruz is recusing herself. This project has, in the staff report and in the conversation and discussion, has, will also include conversation regarding a portion of Times Square. Given, just in an abundance of caution, given that Councilmember Cruz lives next to Times Square, close to that property, she's gonna recuse herself. In the future, though, we're gonna be working on potentially segmenting or separating these projects if they continue down the same path, or if there's still involvement. That way, Councilmember Cruz can at least participate in the, in the, in the Bumgarner project that doesn't have anything to do with, with Times Square.
I too will be recusing myself for this item.
Okay. Kevin, this is your item, please?
Yes, yes, can everyone hear me? Okay. Mayor, council members, this item is the consideration of the Bumgarner Ranch residential project. So the agenda for this item, and we'll go as quickly as we can, I'm gonna walk through a PowerPoint just describing the project, amenities, layout, architecture, talk about the planning commission recommendations, and review the entitlements. And then Mr. Jake Lingo from Integrated Community Development would also like to talk about his project a little bit. Once we're done with that, I'd like to take it back to me and give you an update on our progress towards this potential land swap concept that we've been discussing, and give you an update on what's happening there, after which we'll have time for questions. And of course, questions anytime during the presentation. So Irene, can you advance the slide, please? So just a quick overview, the project includes 304 units, it's 79 single-family homes, 59 row homes, it, there's a typo in the staff report, it says 60, it's actually 59, 166 multifamily units, 92 of which are affordable. And of course, to support all of these units, there's a lot of infrastructure going in, including roads, sidewalks, underground utilities, undergrounding power lines, dry utilities, wet utilities. Also, there is some open space and amenities that we'll talk a little bit about on a, a slide coming up. Next slide, please. So for those in the audience, and for those who don't know, this is where the project is located. You can see where it's kind of the southernmost terminus of Foothill Drive. To the east is Payless Storage, and to the south is the site that the school district owns. Also, I forgot to mention, we have received correspondence from the school district, as well as Ms. Angela Cordova, and also Rafael is out there, I think, so if we have any real specific questions, since he did a lot of work on this project, we may ask him. Okay, next slide, please. So there's a lot of entitlements. The planning commission did give the project a thorough review over the course of two meetings, and they did recommend approval to the council. This includes a mitigated negative declaration, this is the environmental analysis of the project, general plan amendment, and we'll talk a little bit about that, tentative map, precise development plan, major design review, and pre-annexation and zoning. And that's kind of why we have two resolutions and an ordinance to get this project moving along. Next slide. The general plan amendment really relates to a land use designation. You can see this blue section of the, on the map here would be changed from general industry to high-density residential to accommodate the multifamily and row home section of the, of the project. Next slide. This is the vesting tentative map, and this kind of gives you a layout of how the project, gives you an overview of how the project's laid out. You can see a majority of the project is single-family. The lots in the single-family are 2,500 square feet, so it's really probably considered, you know, a small lot subdivision. The row homes are on 1,200 to 2,000 square foot lots, and those are located in the northeast corner, and then in the southeast corner are the multifamily. And then you can see Foothill is extended down. One of the early comments we had was we wanted them to tee that intersection that connect the two sides, east and west, to make that a, an intersection. And then the road goes out, the road to the south goes out to South Cloverdale Boulevard, and that road does not have a name yet, we're calling it Road A. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about the architecture, it's a three-story, they all have elevators, of course, it's described as modern ranch prairie style, I, I'm not sure what that is, but maybe Jake, if you're interested, we can get a little bit more about that. Lab siding and canvas awnings, I think the real takeaway here is it's gonna look a lot like Cloverdale Family Apartments, which is a, you know, a project that's been in town for a while and accepted and liked, and Jake can add something to that when his turn comes. But this is a general sense of what the, the multifamily is proposed to look like. Next slide, please. The single-family, there's, there's five different models, so that's gonna provide sort of a varied streetscape. Recess garages, which is nice, so there's not a garage dominance. The entries, the entries are pulled forward to kind of emphasize the entry, the pedestrian entry, not the car entry, so it gives kind of a nice look to the street. Canilevered second floors, modern floor plans, you know, great rooms and large, large windows, natural tone colors, the planning commission did talk about the colors quite a bit. And the sizes are really, this, these are rounded up, but it's just under 14,000 for the small one, the single story, on up to just under 1,900, it's like 1,870 square feet on the single-family. Next slide, please. And here's the row homes, these are attached, single-family, these are for-sale units. They are, again, they have a, the, the second stores, stories kind of pushed back, so it kind of breaks up the massing, so that there's a little bit of relief and elevation from the first floor to the second floor. Again, modern floor plan, transom, lots of lights. And then with these, the, the garages are actually accessed through an alleyway in the back, so the front facade is really just pedestrian with service entrances through alleys in the back. Next, please. Let's talk about the amenities a little bit, both the, the row homes, as well as the multifamily, have community rooms, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes, about some of the planning commission comments on that. There is a trail on the east side of the project that runs north-south, and that's along the drainage swale there, so there's gonna be an improvement there in terms of adding a trail and trees and, and fixing that up and make, try and make that into an amenity. There are tot lots on both the townhomes and the row homes. Can you, next slide, please, Irene? Again, with the community rooms, there is a barbecue area in the multifamily, tot lots, the linear trail. So those are some of the amenities that are included in the multifamily portions of the project and the, and the row homes. Next slide, please. I just want to talk real quick about the California density bonus laws, because this is kind of a big part of making this project happen. It really requires jurisdictions that provide affordable housing up to three incentives or consent, or, or incentives or concessions, excuse me. The project does include 92 affordable units, so that's almost a third. The waivers being sought, and we don't really have a lot of discretion, it's kind of, if they meet the, the standard, they're kind of entitled to them, but just to point out what those are, reduction in parking for the multifamily, and you can, you can see the numbers there, reduction in setbacks on the single-family, we would, would be a 20-foot, some, some cases it's less than 20 feet. I just want to point out, in the single-family, there are small yards, there's enough to definitely get out and, and have a barbecue, they're not huge yards, obviously by the lot size, but there is room to get outside and have private open space. And then the next one's kind of similar, the lot reduction in our plan development from 3,000, which is the minimum, to 2,500. So next slide, please. As any annexation over 10 acres per our city policy requires a fiscal analysis be completed, the applicant did complete that, it was included in your packet. It was a very thorough analysis, it was very enlightening, at least from, from my perspective. Just some of the key takeaway summary findings were, project really would be considered neutral to the general fund, and we contribute $114,000 annually to our ad valorem, where we are a little, running a little bit of a... Where we are a little, running a little bit of a des, deficit would be in the road maintenance. So it would generate about $30,000 in SB1 gas fund taxes. But the annual cost is about 61,000 and that's about $105 a unit. We have, as we had the, the conversation about the community facilities district, we had the presentation at council a few months ago, we've been talking to the developer about that and he's open to this idea. I, I don't know if you remember, but when the presentation was, was given, it was really discussed that early on in these developments is the best time to do these. It only requires one vote versus trying to get an entire neighborhood to agree. So we've, we've talked about this with the, with Mr. Lingo and he's agreed to it. We have a condition of approval that kind of asks him to continue discussing it, but he may want to talk a little bit more about it, but he is open to the idea. So it's something we'll definitely be pursuing to cover any costs associated with the project in terms of, to the general fund.
Kevin, I have a quick question here, if I may. Is it within our authority to make it a condition to have the CFD? Or is it just in our authority to continue the dialogue?
Well, the, the condition really says that they'll continue discussions of it, you know, for us to get, you know, I don't know, that might be a Jose question, but, you know, he's open to it. So, you know, we could amend the condition to, I don't, I'm not sure if we can compel him to, to do that in that way through a condition, but he's very open to it. So I don't know, Jose, if you have anything more. I'm not sure if we know the answer to that, but.
And, and Kevin, and just for the council, I also have, I've asked my colleague Ed Gutzmacher to join. I know he's been working with, with Kevin on, on some aspects of this project. He's one of our land use experts of the firm and I wanted to go ahead and have him join in case there's questions or we could help kind of move the project along or answer questions from the council regarding a CFD. It, it really depends on, on the discussions with the, the applicant. I do see a lot of projects that just have it a condition of approval. For example, just like conditions of approval to enter into landscape and lighting districts, there are also conditions of approval which require entering into other funding mechanisms like CFDs that involves a conversation beforehand. And I don't know, Ed, if you have any information regarding kind of the CFDs, but I have seen them very much as part of the conditions in other projects for other jurisdictions.
Thanks, Jose. Yeah, I mean, I think you could require it as a condition of approval, especially if you establish an nexus between the, the impacts that the project's going to have on the public facilities and the need to fund those public facilities. So I think that would be acceptable.
Yeah, we can, we can further that discussion. Again, we've, we've been on, kind of going down the road where he's, he's open to it. So, you know, now would be the time to have that conversation.
Thank you, Kevin. Pardon the interruption.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Okay, can we go on to the next slide? Yeah, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the planning commission. I was, I was very, very proud of the planning commission and the way that they reviewed the project and came up with really what I thought were some, some good ideas that I hadn't thought of. And so they're kind of outlined here. I'd like to go through those and just see if there's consensus to include these. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping there is. I don't see anything really, and the applicant knows about these and is certainly in agreement with them. So the first one was to pre-wire both the community rooms for generator use. And this is during construction. This is a real easy process. It's just a little bit more wiring and, what do they call it, mayor? A switch, switch box. So then we can hook up a generator quickly and easily. So folks who live within those communities will have a place to go during PSPS's. Install purple pipe for future recycled use. I don't know if the city engineer wants to talk about this one at all, but the applicant has, has agreed to this. Provide additional screenings on lots 1 through 10. So this is really the only place in this development that butts up to existing single-family homes. And there was a little bit of a concern that he wanted, we wanted additional screening between those existing homes and what will be new homes if the project moves forward. And he agreed to that. We did have a lot of discussions regarding solar and EV charging stations. The applicant has agreed to, you know, obviously it's required within the building code now so that you have a parking lot of a certain size, you have to provide X number of EV charging stations. He's agreed to do that. He's also agreed to exceed, strive to exceed the building code. So we don't have a full number of what that would be, but he has, and I will let him speak to that if there's, if there's interest to hear more about that. Also, within the building code now is the requirement for PV on new construction. We had long discussions with the planning commission and the applicant has agreed to. Obviously, he doesn't have a choice in meeting the building code, but to actually strive to exceed the building code requirements. And so that's not really a condition, but that was a big discussion. Also, I mentioned that the school district had submitted a letter asking for some things and they kind of encouraged him to continue his dialogue with the school district. And I know he has been working with them for the, the past two years. So those were the planning commission comments. I don't know if there's any, maybe we could just take a, a quick minute to see if there's any questions about those or objections so that we can.
Thank you, Kevin. Council, we have any questions so far in the presentation? And I'm seeing no one. Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room that might like to ask a question?
No hands are raised, mayor.
Kevin, please, finish.
Okay, great. So we can move on to the, the last slide and then we can bring in Mr. Lingo to give us more perspective on his project. We do have a recommendation and again, I, I'm holding off on discussing our, our land swap opportunity until after Mr. Lingo and I will give an update and I may ask Jose and David to, to help me out with that one. It's pretty complicated. But we do have a couple of resolutions, you know, one for the sequoia document, one approving the precise development plan, design review, general plan and tentative map. And then there is an introduction of the ordinance for the pre-zoning. Maybe we can come back to this slide later when we get further along in the discussion, if, if that's where it's going. So with that, Jake, I don't know if you're out there, I haven't seen your name, but Irene, he, he, if you could put up Mr. Lingo's presentation and we can, and, and get on with that one.
Jake, welcome.
Thank you. Can you guys all hear me and see me? Great. Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for allowing me to join you tonight via virtual meeting. As you stated, my name is Jake Lingo and I'm here on behalf of Integrated Community Development, also known as ICD, and the Bumgarner Ranch Master Plan Community. I'd like to start out tonight by saying that I'm relieved that the fire did not reach the city limits of Cloverdale and I hope that they're over with soon. I firsthand knowledge of how devastating and nerve-wracking these fires can be and so my heart goes out to you all, the city's residents. I applaud and I commend you guys for holding tonight's meeting and truly appreciate how hard you are working to keep the community calendar on track during these trying times. I also want to thank Kevin Thompson, Rafael, Miranda, David Kelly and all city staff for all their hard work that they've put in on this application, on this project over the years. Tonight, I thought I'd talk a little bit about our development team, who we are, what we do, and then I'll present to you the vision that we have for this 28-acre parcel. We started working on this development over three years ago and have relied upon local stakeholders, leaders and residents to help hold the vision of this property into the development you have before you tonight. We're excited about what the future holds for South Cloverdale and the opportunity this parcel presents to have a real positive impact on the community. If we are fortunate enough to garner your approval tonight, we will be one step closer to providing this housing-starved region with new opportunities to provide homes to the residents of Cloverdale. Our company, ICD, is a fully integrated development firm that specializes in all aspects of real estate development. We focus on affecting change by creating environments that uplift communities by being sustainable, socially responsible and economically viable. We have developed and constructed 75 developments totaling close to 5,000 housing units throughout the state of California. We have secured approximately $2 billion worth of both public and private financing to construct these developments. One of these developments is the Cloverdale Family Apartments. It's the 32-unit apartment development located at Hillsburg Avenue, which was completed by our team in 2017. This is the first and only B Platinum net zero multifamily apartment building in all of Sonoma County. We are extremely proud of that development and the positive impact it's having to, in providing to your community. The hallmark of our business and something that we are extremely proud of is the amount of repeat business that we do, that we do. If you look at our portfolio, you will see many communities where we have built multiple developments. We have a history and reputation of delivering on our promises and standing by our products. If there are issues that need to be addressed, we address them head-on and we strive to be a positive influence on the communities we reside in. Our hope is to once again fulfill this goal of working with the city of Cloverdale for the second time based on the success of our first development. Next slide, please. This brings us to the project before you tonight, known as Bumgarner Ranch. As we have spent the past five years developing, constructing and now operating the Cloverdale Family Apartments, one thing has become abundantly clear. Cloverdale is a great city, plain and simple. We love the charm of this community, its location, the scenery and most of all, the people. What we have also concluded is that Cloverdale is growing and it needs more housing options. It needs more rental housing. It needs more single-family homes. It needs to increase its revenues and provide the opportunities for families to flourish. We want to be a part of bringing all these things to Cloverdale, Cloverdale, and we are looking to invest approximately $100 million into the city to help this vision come to life. The need for quality new workforce housing in this region is known, but I want to give you some context as to this, how severe it really is and how we arrived at this place in time. In 2019, we contracted with the Gregory Group, a firm that specializes in market assessment and analysis, to better study the Cloverdale housing market and provide us with data to support our demand analysis of the market. And there were some striking takeaways. I want to walk you through quickly housing production in Cloverdale decade by decade, starting with the eighties. From 1980 to 1989, there were 409 single-family homes built in Cloverdale. From 1990 to 99, there were 670 single-family homes built in Cloverdale. From 2000 to 2006, there were 750 single-family homes built. But from 2007 to now, there have only been eight single-family homes built and not a single-family home has been built here since 2009. That's 11 years with virtually no new single-family homes being built. Now, of course, this is going to lead to a housing shortage. People grow up in Cloverdale and they can't take up roots and start a family in their own community because they can't afford it or they can't find a place to buy or rent. How can a community regenerate and grow if it builds zero new houses for its workers, its teachers, its families? It's not a sustainable system. So this has a trickle-down effect, not only to the residents, but also the local government. With overcrowding conditions and no new housing, there are no new revenues for new development to pay for new infrastructure and ongoing maintenance as we went through the needs assessment tonight with the water and the sewer treatment. Bumgarner Ranch will also have a positive effect on the business community and the commercial centers, the local shops and restaurants that surround it, thus creating more jobs and increasing tax revenues for the city. We want to be a part of bringing new homes, new opportunity to Cloverdale. We are willing to invest heavily into this city to help this vision come to life. Tonight is the final step with the city's public process and we are seeking an approval of the city council of the precise development plan, design review, general plan amendment, tentative map and pre-zone of the property. We are successful. We will move on to LAFCO and the annexation process. We brought our conceptual plan, which is on the screen now, before the city council last year in which you approved in a 5-0 vote to allow the project to move forward with the annexation application. Last month, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the Bumgarner Ranch as well. As you will see over the course of my presentation, I think we have kept true to this conceptual plan and vision and that we presented to the council and we are thrilled with the plans that we have come up with. I look forward to working with you and city staff to breed this amazing project to market and to provide relief to the working families of Cloverdale. Next slide, please. Bumgarner Ranch sits on 28 acres at the south end of town, right at the city limit line. The site currently consists of a beautiful oak-covered hillside and old ranch owned by the Bumgarner family and a seasonal creek. All utilities are available at the site, including city water and sewer. Next slide, please. The site is in close proximity to public transit, groceries, pharmacies, banks and Ferber Park, which will provide future residents ample shopping and recreation opportunities within walking distance of the new development. Bumgarner Ranch has been designed to offer the workforce community a variety of housing options, including single-family detached homes, row houses and multifamily apartments. All of the houses are designed with livability and efficiency in mind. Modest-sized residences with no wasted space, open floor plans, large windows and good indoor-outdoor living relationships. The master plan community will provide multiple housing options at multiple price points ranging from affordable for rent housing to market rate for sale units. The total build-out will produce 304 new homes and hopefully spur new developments south of town. Next slide, please. The 28-acre parcel is bounded by a protected seasonal creek on one side and a hillside which is zone conservation on the other. Once we dedicate these two spaces, we end up with a much smaller footprint to develop upon. Our concept is to situate single-family homes adjacent to the existing single-family homes to the north in the Sunrise Hill subdivision and the multifamily development on the east side of the site running along the creek. The creek area will provide a natural buffer between the existing industrial space and the future residential development. The hillside and creek will provide expansive open space areas, walking trails along the creek, a community center and onsite amenities without the necessity of large, single-family lots and properties to maintain. This allows us to provide more housing options at rents and prices that the community can afford. I would now like to present the three product types we are offering in more detail and discuss the unique living opportunities each provide. We have hired local architect Warren Hedgepick Architects to help us capture the essence of Cloverdale and design homes that fit the lifestyle and budget of the Cloverdale residents. I'll start with the single-family homes. Next slide, please. We're proposing 79 single-family homes with four different floor plans, including single-story and two-story residences. The sizes range from approximately 1,150 square feet to 1,650 square feet. These four different floor plans also offer eight different color schemes. The lot sizes are approximately 2,500 square feet, providing a single-family home living experience with less yard and space to maintain. We have found that as our living experiences have changed over time, so has the market desire for large yards to maintain and upkeep. This allows us to offer the homes to the community at more affordable price points. The various plans do offer outdoor patios and backyard space. Other amenities include walking proximity to Ferber Park, shopping, public transit and easy access on and off Highway 101. The homes present varied streetscapes with garages pushed back and entries pulled forward so that the garage doors do not dominate. The massing at the fronts of the two-story homes have been articulated with lower roofs over the entries and kitchens and canal levered second floors over the garages. First floor plans and open great rooms with large windows and our siding glass, doors overlooking the backyards. Second floors have appropriately sized bedrooms with both hall and master baths and upstairs laundries. Some homes have a fourth room upstairs that can serve as a loft, a study, home office or guest bedroom. Next slide, please. The second product type we are offering is 59 row houses. These sizes range from approximately 1,300 square feet to 1,550 square feet and they offer six different floor plans and we offer eight different color schemes with these as well. Next slide, please. As with the detached homes, the row houses also present varied streetscapes with fronts and second floors pushed back from the front of the first floor. This configuration offers the unique opportunity for transom and light wells for the great rooms, front windows allowing more sunlight and depth in the great rooms. Garages are discreetly placed along internal alleys. Both one and two-story row house plans are offered. Many have first-floor bedrooms and some are designed to be ADA accessibility compliant. Next slide. There's also a community building that has been designed to look like the agricultural buildings of Sonoma County, using the ranch style with gable roofs and board and batten siding. Inside, a large central community room has a tall ceiling with clear-story windows. This community room is flanked on both sides with the secondary rooms. Entrances and porches are located at both ends of the building and the community room will offer recreation space, classroom areas and a computer lab for the residents. Next slide, please. Onsite amenities include the community room, a tot lot, barbecue picnic area and access to the creek site trail. Next slide, please. The third product type we are offering are the apartments. The development consists of 166 apartments in one, two and three-bedroom configurations. Each building is provided with accessible elevator access and centralized enclosed corridors. The building's design contemplates the modern ranch and prairie-style architecture seen in single-family houses and the row houses. Sloping gable and shed roofs define the exterior balcony and patio spaces, while the use of various materials such as lap siding, canvas awnings and wood trim accent the overall design aesthetic while creating a sense of rhythm and movement along the exterior facade. Next slide, please. The apartments will also have a community room in each building that will offer recreation space, classrooms and a computer lab. Next slide. The apartments are comprised of two three-story buildings designed around a central courtyard area that has tot lot, barbecue, picnic area and open space. The residents will also have access to the creek side trail. The residents will also have access to the creek side trail. Next slide, please. I can hope that you can see the amount of thought we have put into the design of the site plan and the buildings themselves. We have concentrated on creating a vibrant, walkable, sustainable community that is financially feasible and responsible. It is ICD's goal to provide a multitude of high-quality housing options to meet the needs of all segments of the community, including for rent and for sale homes. We hear the outcry from residents, including young families, first-time homebuyers, displaced families, the workforce, and seniors all looking for a place to call home. This development has the potential to transform South Cloverdale by providing new high-quality housing options that will introduce a new generation of smart growth and design. The outdoor space complemented by smart building techniques and planning will truly foster a sense of neighborhood that fits the character of Cloverdale. We understand the severe lack of housing in this region, and we want to be a shining example of what well-thought-out community-based planning can achieve. This concludes my presentation. I'm now here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to just wrap it up with an update on the land swap concept and then we can see if there's any questions regarding that idea.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Let me just see if there's any questions. Council members, can we open it up for questions, please?
If Kevin wants to finish the whole picture, that's fine, but I do have comments and questions about that presentation. But I'm happy to wait till we get the full picture and kind of address it in that context if you find that to be more appropriate.
Kevin, which would you prefer?
It's at your pleasure. I mean, maybe I'll just finish up. That might spark some more questions.
Why don't you finish up?
Okay. So as the, as the staff report indicates, you know, since the planning commission has done its review, Mayor Walter has come up with a possible alternative for the project that could be a great opportunity for both the project and the city. Just generally speaking, the idea is, is it, in exchange for the possibility of developing at the Times Square site, integrated community development would reduce the number of units in the Baumgartner project and create a park within the project. At this point, we don't really have the details ironed out. This is all sort of a new concept at this point. We did hear the desire for the council, by the council, to keep the project moving with minimal delays. To that end, we've written a condition of approval that we think will help the project move forward, one, and two, help us to continue to negotiate some sort of land swap for the, for the project and the Times Square. The, the new condition of approval requires us, the city, and Integrated Community Development to enter an exclusive negotiating agreement within thirty days of approval of the vesting tentative map, which is before you tonight. So if the project was to get approved tonight, that clock would start ticking, so we would enter into an agreement. And prior to the recordation of the final map, which is also a council action, we would want to have the, the, the concept sewn up and understand who's, who's going to be doing what. So one detail we do know about this potential land swap is that the park in Baumgartner would be, in the Baumgartner Ranch project, would be about, would be placed on a one-point-three-acre site, and that would come from the elimination of eight of the single-family homes. And that would be up against and contiguous to the proposed, and I failed to mention the open space in my presentation, and I apologize for that. There is a proposed six-point-eight acres of open space. You can see on this diagram in front of you, sort of to the west where that trail is. We've had discussions with Mr. Lingo about making that public. He's indicated that he is willing to do that. His concern, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Jake, was really he didn't want it to delay the project, and he would prefer not to be the manager of that open space. So what we've discussed to this point would be the elimination of the eight on that sort of half-road that sticks to the west, and that would be replaced with a park contiguous to the six-point-eight acres. I just want to be really clear, it's very important to understand that if, if we can't come to an agreement on this land swap, that if the project is approved the way we're discussing tonight, the project would be approved with those eight single-family homes. And he would have the ability to, to, to work on those. Conversely, if the, if the council feels really strongly about the project including a park, they could make that a condition of approval short of any agreement with the Times Square per our Quimby Act requirements. You know, so if, if we do this, Jose, I might want to ask you to jump in, but if we, if we approve the project the way it is, we feel like we do have the ability to continue discussing this land swap idea. We don't have details worked out. David and I have discussed with Jake sort of some of our preliminary expectations that we heard from the council regarding this, and he seems open to it. Jose, you got any, got any additional information on that or?
Absolutely, Kevin. So if I may, one of the things, and I know we've been calling it a, a land swap. There's a couple of ways of looking at it. I think that, that the approach was, as the council knows and is in the staff report, of having a park there where those eight single-family homes are. And then also, there's been some interest in, in the Times Square property and potentially moving forward with there and having some development by, by the applicant there as well. I think it kind of got together and got mixed in together because the project's coming forward. If, as Kevin mentioned, right now, which you're seeing before you, the plan you would be approving if, if, if you approved as presented, still has the eight homes. It would have a, a condition of approval basically saying, hey, we're going to enter into an agreement to continue the negotiations for that Times Square property. We're still kind of working out how that would work. A couple of things to point out, if, under the condition, if for some reason negotiation cannot be reached, if you enter into a negotiation, if for some reason the parties just can't agree on, or timing doesn't work, or whatever it is, by the time they come in for a final map, then it would, it would be the eight homes. It would not be the park. So that's very important to point out. I think Kevin, Kevin, Kevin brought that up. We would still work and, and it seems as though the applicant's very interested in continuing to talk and continue to see what, what it would look like. And I think that that's, that's kind of what, where we've positioned or where, or staff has positioned the project as far as having that continued dialogue. What Kevin also brought up is there are Quimby Act requirements. Quimby Act requirements meaning park dedication. And this, this applicant, please, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong at any point, but the project is slated to pay in lieu fees instead of dedicating park property or, or property for, for a park.
Correct.
The, the, the council does have an option of saying the requirements of Quimby are either you dedicate land or you pay the fees. In this case, the council can say this doesn't really work without the park, let's say. We would rather have the park than the fees, or at least for that portion of, of, of the, the park, though, whatever the acreage was as, as part of, and it would reduce the end lieu fees proportionally to the property they, they provide. So there are, there are a few options here. I think the discussion that the council should have is how important is the park? Is the council willing to not have the park there as a, as a kind of mandatory requirement, but continue the conversations between Times Square and this project? Another thing to point out is I know the, the word land swap keeps coming up, or the phrase land swap keeps coming up. So just, I mean, and, and this is a great idea, so we're all kind of rushing to try to make this happen some way or another. But the land swap idea is, really talks about swapping two pieces of property, right? That's kind of what it means. You swap land. In that case, the park in lieu fees would still be in place because you're swapping land. We haven't got into those details with the developer as far as what, what swapping land would mean. But if, just hypothetically, if you swap land, then you still have those park impact fees or those, the end lieu fees that would still need to be paid because you gave other consideration for that park. So there's a lot of things going on as far as a lot of, a lot of discussion points that still need to be raised with the developer. I think it's exciting that they're willing to consider Times Square as well. I think we're all trying to work towards that, 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 that concept. But again, I think the conversation the council should have is how important is the park there? Is that something the council feels as though we're okay with the condition moving forward, recognizing that at the end of the day, a park may not be there? Because if we can't reach negotiations by the time they pull a final map, then it would go back, it would, it would stay the eight homes, just like what you're seeing now. If we were able to reach negotiations, if we were able to reach terms on, on, let's say, the Times Square property, whatever it is, then that would, they would be coming back for an amendment of their tentative map in order to make it into a park and then finalize their map and get their final map. But I think the conversation about the park needs to happen and maybe we could talk more about the options. I'm sorry, I know I just dumped a whole lot of information on the council. And I don't know, I think I, I think kind of, at least for now, I covered a lot of those, those angles. Ed, if I missed anything on the land use side, please let me know. But I think that the first conversation is maybe when we, when we talk about this, this, this potential issue with Times Square and what do we do there? I think that the first conversation really is the park and how important the park is.
Hey, or council, i- if I can, just to add to Jose's comment. I, I think obviously there's, there's a lot of interest in the concept of a, of a park within the proposed Baumgartner development. I just want to ensure council doesn't lose sight of the other entitlements that are part of this project, which do include the precise development plan, the design review piece, the general plan amendment, and then the tentative map and pre-zoning. Again, this is, this is project that this area is currently outside the city limits. It's currently designated on your general plan as industrial. And the developer has come up with, and we thank him for coming up with a very creative development plan that I think addresses the new economy relative to two smaller, smaller lots and low landscape area and a higher density than we've, you know, really have ever seen in this community. But I think, just want to ensure council looks at this project to the lens of the big picture and not just focus on the park. But with that said, we, we will go back to the park and we'll hone in on that. But, but we, I think it's critical as part of your review, you do look at, you know, do you like the architecture? Do you like the layout of the proposed project as it's been presented to you? Do you like the number of lots and the density that's proposed? And if all of that works, and we think there is tremendous support for it in the form that it's being presented, then go to the park. So I just want to make sure that you, you look at all those elements as part of your review process tonight. We realize it's a big project. Often cities take time, councils take time to really digest all those elements, but it's been, it's been before the commission. Now, at least twice, it's come before this council as part of a pre-annexation review. So you may be very comfortable with it, but I just want to make sure, as, as part of your review tonight, that you also consider all of those other elements. Again, the, the design of the project and how it's laid out, how it interfaces with the, the industrial land to the east, how it ties into Sand Home to the north and the adjoining neighborhood in the northwest corner, and also the open-spaced land that's proposed. I know Jake and his team put a lot of work and effort into how this project's laid out. But I want to make sure that, you know, as council's party review, that you, you concur with the design as it's presented and as, as it's been recommended by the, by your planning commission.
And David, and I'm sorry, Mayor, to jump in, but just if I misspoke, I, what I was talking about the first step is when we were talking about that land swap idea, is that's when we should talk about kind of how important the park is. So sorry if I, if I, if that was misunderstood. I didn't mean that the park was the only thing about this project. It's just as we talk about that component, the park is important to, to understand the, the council on, on what the council's wishes are. Thanks, David.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose, Kevin, and Jake. Welcome, and thank you for the presentation. Council members, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for you to ask questions and give your opinions on the development of the housing component of this. And just following some suggestions from David and from Jose, is, is, let's make sure we're comfortable with the project and then get into the park issues. So council members, would you like to get started? Councilman Bagby, please.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in. I, I think what I'm hearing from staff, I'm going to, I'm going to reverse the role on you guys. I'm going to say, I'm going to say what I think I heard, and then you can confirm it. I think what I'm hearing is that I, is that you want to hear kind of our, our general impressions of the design, the housing types, and then how important the, the park is to us. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. I, those are the three things I'm going to talk about unless you tell me I'm missing something. So, um, so first off, design, I, I think you've done a great job again, Jake, you and your team. It looks like a, a beautiful addition to the community and actually will fit right in with the, you have beautiful development at Sunrise Hills. It will not, it'll, it'll complement that neighborhood. As far as your, the housing composition and the, the lot sizes, you've clearly done your homework. This is where the demographics are right now. This is where the, you know, we, and pointing out that we haven't had a new single-family home development since two thousand and nine is, it's pretty, it's pretty scary. I mean, th- this will basically start to help us catch up to where we need to be on our different kinds of housing stock. So it, this is, this is not the solution. This is a start. And yeah, again, kudos to your real estate research team. They are clearly crackerjacking right, right on top of it. And then as far as the, the park is concerned, you know, it's not just like my harebrained opinion, which were the, the two previous comments, those are just based on, you know, my personal opinion, but, you know, just from what I hear from folks around town and the correspondence that we received is that, and, 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 and just talking to folks about the fact that we're just totally parks poor, and it's not just city parks, you know, it's park facilities of all kinds in the North County are just completely underserved. And we're, we're just, we're starting to kind of, you know, address that, that deficit. But, you know, this community needs soccer fields badly. I mean, you know, that's what kids play here, and that's where the demand is. And we're just, they're, the fields that we have are just bursting at the seams. So, yeah, I'm very enthusiastic, very supportive of the project. I think that you've really knocked it out of the park. Sorry to use that phrase, but, pardon the pen. But that, that, that park space and doing a swap with, I mean, sorry, I know, it's not, not a, not a legal term. Basically, having an other high-density development closer to downtown, closer to the Smart Station. It's, it gives us the added advantage of having more dense development near the Smart Station, which will improve our chances for getting the, the train to come to Cloverdale. So it's not just that we, we, we need the parks, we, we, we need a park. I think Ferber Far, Ferber Park is too far away. That's just, that's my personal opinion from somebody who used to be a kid and ride a bike to a park when I was a younger kid living in Rar Park, you know? I mean, in Rar Park, you were like, you were like a block away from a park, you know, for, for a reason. And you didn't have to ride your bike three or four or five blocks to a park. You just, they're, they were just right there. And, and I think that that's what we need, that's what we need to have, is that we're just, we're just two parks for at that end of town. So it is important to me, but I guess I'd have to say, right now, I know it's going to be complicated. It's not a complete deal, deal breaker for me, but it is, is something that I want to see. So the park's important to me, but also that dense, a, a potential dense development at Times Square within, or I think it's probably within a quarter mile of the train station. It also gives us an other dense residential development near that train station, which gives us another chip in our favor for Smart Train. So it kind of has the added importance there. So that's where, yeah, that's where I stand. Hopefully that was clear. If I missed a bullet point, I'm If I missed a bullet point, I'm sure David will, will let me know.
Thank you, Melanie. Councilmember Turner, would you like to go next?
Thanks, Gus, or Mr. Mayor. One of my first questions has to do with the single-family homes that butt up to the existing neighborhood, I think it's Sunrise Hills. One of the things that I found myself ignorant about is when I look at a property and I think to myself of how tall elevation and the grading will be for the building when all is said and done, I usually find that I'm underestimating how tall things have to become for sewers to have the fall that they're supposed to have, et cetera, et cetera. And so we have had some negative feedback about, i- i- it's not single-family homes, but apartment is kind of towering over the existing development that's there to where all of a sudden they lost their view of the hillside that was otherwise visible before. And so on those single-family homes, do you anticipate them being set at a higher elevation? If I'm using the right word there, but even 12 or 15 or 8 or 9 feet taller than what the grading would be of, of the existing neighborhood next to it?
Can we answer that now, or do you want me to take all the questions and answer?
Jake, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear that.
Oh, it's okay. Do you want me to just go ahead and answer the questions as they come, or do you want me to take all of the questions and answer them at once?
Whichever's easiest for you, Jake.
Okay. That one's a pretty easy one, we will be matching the existing grades. We have Sunsite Drive that actually is gonna extend into our, the Beaumont Gardner Ranch subdivision, so we will be matching existing grades at the, at the SFRs on the north end of the property.
All right, cool. And then looking at the same map here, or the same picture here, number 13, it looks like it's kind of a circular trail, and then number seven comes up, so it looks like there's going to be a few parking spots there and some single-family homes that run along the side. Could we just go ahead and drop a dog park there?
I think probably not the best plan to be looking at if we're talking about what the final design was. We came up with this over two years ago to present as a vision. One of the points I was trying to make in my presentation was, though, that we did, we feel like we stayed true to that, at least initial design concept. What we presented, it hasn't changed drastically, but if we want to pull up kind of the current design and how the parcels are laid out, it might be more beneficial if we're talking about park space and dedication. And I can touch on the park situation whenever you guys would like me to, to chime in on that, that's probably a little bit of a more robust conversation, but I can give you my insight as well whenever you feel it's appropriate.
Irene, could you put my, my presentation back up on the, the site layout slide?
Give me just one moment.
If you could go up just a few slides to the, the map, that'd probably be the best Just, sorry, down, just a couple, not... That one, yeah.
Okay, now what?
Keep it down a slight, I mean... Move one down. I think this one, or this is the, the actual application map.
Okay. Then I have a, I mean, I, I get what you're showing me here, it's not quite the same as what the colored one was, I don't see the trails cut and stuff, it doesn't look like it has the, the parking lots and what have you, but is this to show me that they went in a different direction, or?
I just wanted to talk about, if you want to talk specifically about the layout, that we were looking at the current layout, there's some differences with that conceptual plan, that's all I was stating.
Hi, Mayor, if I can, just a little, part of what you're seeing is the difference here is, the original, the graphic colors and trail is, is really bad, it's a graphic, it's a conceptual plan, which kind of highlights elements to the project.
You're on mute.
This slide is the best tentative map. One of the actions that you're proposing is to approve your best tentative map. This is what you would be approving, not the conceptual plan. So this is, the best tentative map ultimately comes back through the approval in this form, it shows these lots as shown on this exhibit. It becomes a recorded, ultimately, a final map is submitted to council, or the final map is what gets recorded with the court recorder of county and actually creates individual lots.
Da- David, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. So he, he basically educated me on the fact that this is what we're approving, not the, the very pretty colorful one. But, but he used much more constructive language than that. The, the last thing I want to touch on is, is just getting into opinions here, because I, I will wait patiently before we get into the park, but i- it's my opinion that I'd like to see the community facilities district be a condition of approval. It gives us an opportunity to create revenue for the expenses that a neighborhood inherently has over the course of time, and, and that's what that, that slide dictated, was we weren't going to quite recoup the money for road maintenance, and I'm sure there's a few other things that fall into that category as well. So that's just an opinion of mine. One of my fears that I have, I've spoken about this at, at previous meetings, has to do with the reliability of our water supply chain under the fact that the Eel River Project is just going through some changes. I, I think Melanie ultimately has the, the, the best pulse on this, but I, I asked this question to anybody who may have knowledge on it, are we getting any level of studies performed that let us know what the water table's going to kind of be like with the reduc- reduced water letting out of Lake Mendocino, some of the reduction from those watersheds that are making it down here? Will we have an idea of reliability in, in our supply chain for water? And the other thing, and, and last thing that I'll, I'll leave it with, is when we kind of discuss some of the impact fees, I, I'd like to see if we can, as much of a portion or majority of cutting in those new wells kind of come from here as opposed to the ratepayers, but I, I, I can't quite put my finger on what, what, what that might look like. So, so that really concludes my, my opinions for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham?
As far as the look and design of the buildings themselves, I think they're nice, they're very nice looking. I like the fact that there's multiple options, you know, that you're putting in apartments, townhouses, and single-family. I think that's a, a nice thing. I know that you all know that I was never really crazy about this idea, because I really don't like seeing general industrial land going to this type of use, but I know that we need housing, so I'm, I'm kind of moving over from that. As far as the... I think it has been well researched, I, I, I just can't get around the fact, though, that if you're gonna pack 300 and some homes in there, or 300, 299, that's a lot of people, and I still don't see the park space. And I would not, in my own brain, I, I just couldn't feel good about approving even a tentative map tonight with those eight homes still in the picture. There's just not enough park space for that many people, and it's my understanding that the open space is going to be a given, but the development itself is not going to put any improvements in that open space to my left. And if you've got that many apartments and it's three-story, people are gonna need a way to walk away from that type of being that close, and need a place with some picnic tables and more playground equipment than a cotlot. It's, that's a lot of folks, so I, I really would, it would be a deal breaker for me if we didn't get more park space in there. But I do like the idea of, I think you guys did a beautiful job on the family apartments, and I think that whole thread has got me intrigued. I think that would be a wonderful thing to do, so maybe we can work something out in that regard, but I just would be too nervous to approve the tentative map at this point as we're looking at it right here. God, does anybody want one of these cats? They're just driving me crazy. That's all.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I'm gonna open it up to the public and then I'll bring it back to the, to the city council. Irene, is there anyone in the waiting room that would like to share with us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I have a couple hands up, and I will start with Kevin Dobell.
Good evening, Kevin, I think you're live.
Let's see, try this again. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, can you all hear me? Yes. Mayor and council members, my name's Kevin Dobell, Lakos Associates, just wanted to let you guys know that we, I'm here on behalf of the Dry Creek Rancharia Tribe, who is proposing a project that we're about to resubmit to the city for a project to the south. And we are in support of this project, we think it's very well thought out, it, it does a lot for Cloverdale and it advances Cloverdale's objectives of annexing the South Cloverdale area. This is a catalyst project for furthering the advancement of industrial development and some affordable housing to the south, which we are proposing. And I just wanted to make sure that this was looked at in terms of the bigger picture of South Cloverdale and the overarching goals of the council for the South Cloverdale annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Irene, anyone else?
Yes, and second is Todd.
Todd? Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, council. I'm coming to you with a couple hats on with this one. First is the school board, and second is as community member, and they're going to be kind of intertwined since we're short on time, so I apologize for that, but my comments, they all kind of blend together anyways. We want to start by saying we've been working close with Jake, and we are supporters of his project. However, we are a little leery and, and there's some areas that we think that we need to take into consideration and hoping that the city council takes into consideration with us. The letter that we have provided to you guys lists a lot of things that, that ICD and the school district have been going back and forth and talking about, so you have a lot of the ideas already on hand of what we are hoping that we can work together with to, to partner to make more fields, more places for the kids that are in this development. Couple of our concerns, though, are, as we just saw, and this is a new one, because we just saw the cost analysis as it being a negative basically on the city, that we need to be careful and cognizant of that portion of it, of where that money's going to come from when we're already in a downfall. With the SEQA documents, it basically says that that development is short, almost 200 parking spots, and that concerns the district because those cars have to go somewhere and people have to park somewhere. And with the lot sizes of, the, the largest lot sizes with your single-family homes are only 2,500 square feet. So that technically, if you take a house in, say Vintage Meadows area, the smallest lot is 6,000 square feet, so you're putting two houses on the smallest lots in Vintage Meadows. And so it doesn't leave the parking spot for the width of the property for cars to park on the street, so they will be parking at the school district or through Sunrise Hills and down Foothill Boulevard. 200 cars is a lot of cars. The next was, we're concerned that this development might be too large for the district to handle the amount of children that it will bring. We're nervous that it's gonna bring a minimum of 300 kids, and if you, if you double that, just put two kids per home, now you're at 600, and our school district does not have the ability to carry that many children. Even in a perfect scenario where you fill every seat, we wouldn't be able to, to do what is best for the, the children that that development would bring in at that size. If I'm leaving, if I'm going too fast, please interrupt me. The next thing, right now, we're already in a conservation mode with water, and as we just discussed with the different water and sewer rates going up, we're nervous this is gonna be, have a major challenge with our infrastructure, that we won't be able to handle the larger loads, and we don't have the money to update the, the water and sewer systems at this point. And as we just saw, there was, you know, $12 million, almost $14 million that is being added to upgrade, I understand, however, those things are not 40 years old, because 40 years ago, where our water treatment plant is, it used to be our, our dump in our town, and not many people would know that, probably the only one on here would be Mary Ann Brigham. The city dump was where our water system is, and that's, it's only probably 25 years old, I believe, at this point. We already had to borrow money to, to build that system, so it just, it puts more stress and pressure on the community that we have to bring in more people that are going to have to create the, the facilities money to cover them on their own. It makes it, it makes it more pressure for the citizens that are already living here. But I, I want to, I appreciate Jake and how we've worked with the, the different ideas that we have for the fields. There's a lot of ideas we're throwing around, and they're all good ones. I would just like to see something in writing that says, hey, we are absolutely dedicated to putting in X, Y, and Z or a dollar amount bit, and I'm saying this rude, Jake, and it doesn't mean to sound rude, but if it, if you finish your project and we weren't ready, you leave and we don't get anything, I'm afraid of something like that happening. And so I have to protect the district at that point. Thank you guys for your time, and I'm looking forward to any comments or answers you have for me.
Thank you, Todd. Irene, anyone else out there?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna bring it back to the, to the dais, and you, you know, Kevin, could you go back to the picture, or Irene, could you go back to the slide that was there a minute ago? The, yeah, there you go, thank you. You know, I, I'm just gonna address this particular layout and the housing structure. It's a lot of people, Mary Ann, you're absolutely correct. By the same token, we do need the housing. I have to agree with Melanie, for us to have housing up in the Times Square area, that's ideally where the high density is. I, I, I can support this layout as it is with a recreational component to it. Without that recreational component, I, I really have a hard time doing that. So I, I'd like to see the recreational area, the open space or some type of, of park for the kids, maybe, maybe just bumped out a little bit or each one of them, but I'm all with the plan as it is. Councilmembers, anyone else plan onto that, or staff?
Mayor, council members, if I, if I can, I will try to capture the essence of, of what I think I've heard from council and then maybe carve out a path forward, and I think it's an opportunity for Mr. Lingo and his team also, and Kevin, just to weigh in here. It, it, you know, just in terms of what we outlined earlier, the recommendation for, for council was to, to, you know, look at the layout of the proposed development, look at the design, look at the architecture, whether you support the general plan amendment, whether you support the number of housing units and density, and then to kind of focus on the park. It, I've heard a, a general consensus by the council that you support the proposed project. Uh... The design seems to fit with what you'd like to see in this area. It addresses an important housing need. Didn't really hear any concerns expressed about the proposed architecture or the proposed small lot subdivision. But we did also hear a consensus that there's real interest in a proposed park site. And this kind of drives us to this alternative that came up after planning commission review was to look at the possibility of dedication of the eight single-family lots that are located kind of both north and south, but adjacent to Street D on the west side of the project. And it, I, I guess, given the interest by council in, in supporting a proposed open space, there is a condition included that addresses and provides an opportunity for, for staff to negotiate that with the developer. What, given the strong interest of, of, uh, council in, and considering the project with the open space, my recommendation would be to engage in a conversation with Mr. Lingo about actually amending the vesting tentative map to include the park site. But also if you're, if council was committed to direct staff to bring back with the vesting tentative map an exclusive negotiating agreement to reflect your interest in seeing future development on the Times Square property and also showing your commitment to the developer that while you really want to see open space and a recreational improvement provided for in this, this development, you're also interested in, in working with the developer to provide additional housing opportunities via Times Square. Again, kind of getting to a city attorney's comment, I don't think you necessarily need to look at it like a land swap. Uh, I think we can treat these independently and separately of one another. And by bringing them back as separate items and bringing them back concurrently. So I just want to outline that, 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 that I think that's a path forward for council. If you would rather see an open space in, uh, as part of, in a park site is part of approval of the, of the vesting tentative map. And I think, but that, I think it'd be worthwhile to ask Jake to maybe, to, to, to weigh in on that perspective.
Thank you, David. Jake, um, Jake, before you get started, can I just ask a question? And, and I'm really having a hard time seeing if folks can hear me or not with this computer, but when we first started having the conversation, I, I'm not sure how to word this without Jose getting all excited, but I, I, I thought we had talked about building some low moderate income homes up on Times Square, expanding the park footprint. And were we not gonna reduce the number of units on this particular project from 304 down to 250 something? Or did I miss that completely?
We, we have had that conversation. I think, um, to give it some context, Mayor Walter, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment on all of this is, as, um, Mr. Kelly indicated, after we had the planning commission, uh, recommendation for approval that you had reached out and wanted to discuss if we were willing to entertain the thought of doing some more park space with an agreement to, to do a land swap. And I know that legally, maybe that isn't the correct term, but at least that was in spirit what our conversation was. And so I told you that I would go back and take a very hard look at it and, um, take your considerations. And I thought that we turned around pretty quickly and said, yeah, that's something we want to work on you with. It's something we've always said when we came before the council, either as a public body or if we've met personally, I've always said, I want to try to make your community the best that I can. I can't be everything to everyone, but I'm gonna try what I can do within my powers to, to help alleviate some of the issues. And so we came back with this idea. Um, my understanding is you guys did have a closed session and had some discussion. And that the consensus, at least that was communicated to me, was that we wanted to continue on the timeline that we had discussed, that they wanted to keep the unit counts as high as possible because the housing was needed and that they did want the park. And so based on those communications, that's what we moved forward with. I think that what's important to note and, and maybe hasn't been laid out and I just wanted, from our perspective is we are donating 6.8 acres to the city. It's roadside conservation land. The city isn't sure exactly what mechanism it has yet for the, the, the development and maintenance of that. But the exciting part about that is we've also, with the impact fees for this development for parks adds up to approximately $2.9 million in fees. So you've got, you've got the money there and there to also expand on that parkland. Now, my hope is, based on our conversations, is that we can enter into an agreement where we can build your high-density residential on the Times Square piece. We can also give you the 6.8 acres and this adjacent 1.3 acres, which is on these eight lots that we had discussed. So and if we take all of those together, we're talking about the potential to have a 6.8 acre open space up against a 1.3 acre park with a two, with almost $3 million in fees to do those improvements. So I think we're in a really good position. My only caveat entering all of that discussion was, as you acknowledged, it had come a little bit late in the process and that I didn't want to have to slow down our development too drastically because we do still have to go through the annexation process. And we want to try to get this to market as soon as possible. So that's kind of the background of where we came specifically with the park. There were a couple other items that were brought up by council members in the community that if, if I cared, if I could just address those quickly as well. Going through, um, Councilwoman Bagby, I, I appreciate your comments. Um, I think everyone is has the consensus that the design and the layout is an attractive one and it's well thought out. I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate Hedgepath Architects putting in the time they did. Having that local knowledge really helped out. Um, so I'm, I'm glad and I'm encouraged by the fact that from that perspective, it seems like everyone is in agreement. I understand the need for the CFD. The reason that we have left that open-ended is what I said to Kevin and to David Kelly at the beginning of this process was, I can't commit to a fee amount that I don't know. We haven't done an assessment on the district yet. So for me to wait, to blindly commit to paying whatever CFD fee the city were to come up with is impossible. Um, it, it could potentially make the project unfeasible. So what we did is we came up with an open-ended condition going, hey, we realize that the city hasn't done an assessment yet. We could probably kind of push back against it, say, hey, you don't have a mechanism to do this at this point in time. But rather than do that, let's work together and figure out how to get, again, push this development forward and go back and do the CFD assessment. Because again, the LAPCO process is gonna take at least four to six months once we complete this process, more likely six months to get through the LAPCO process. So we've got a lot of time before we could potentially pull any type of building permit.
Can I pause you real quick? I just need to ask a quick clarifying question. David, that district, that's what, um, we had a conversation with the, the tribe with recently, right? Where the, they had their main project manager leave and we're just waiting for them to finish that up. Is that the facilities district or is that something different? Oh, that's something different. All right. Sorry. Thank you, Jake. Go right ahead.
No problem. Um, I heard some, there was questions, uh, from Councilman Turner with regards to water supply. I understand that there are some unknowns in the future. But what we were tasked with right now was to go through the SEQA analysis and went through the MND process. In studying the 2015 urban water management plan that the city has put together, it was found that this project would have a less than significant impact. And furthermore, it was interesting to watch the presentation tonight because we can see what those needs are for future wells. This development and looking again at how, how do we offset whatever potential impact is, is through the assessment of impact fees. And so this development for water capacity fees will be paying approximately $1.8 million in water capacity fees. And we will also be paying $2.8 million in wastewater capacity fees. So when we look at, uh, one of the things I kind of keyed in on was the fact that right now I think the water capacity fee, um, fund has about $470,000 in it, what is what was claimed tonight. And the expansion of that well is gonna be about 1.4 million. So these fees could actually help fund that expansion, which as I understood it, needs to happen regardless whether or not this development comes online. So again, when we're talking and looking at impacts, looking to the MND, looking to that initial study, that's exactly what that document's there. So that we don't have to guess, we don't have to bring opinion into it. We can rely on this third party who did the assessment saying that this is a less than significant impact. I understand that there are some future questions with regards to the Russian River and, but those are things that are, I think, out of all of our hands at this point and something that is gonna play out throughout the entire county of Sonoma. So not knowing really at this time, you know, other than paying our, our fair share of the fees with, again, the studies that are in place, we do have a less than significant impact. Going on to, uh, some public comments from Mr. Landz. I appreciate, uh, the support. I know that we have had a lot of discussion, um, throughout this process with the school district. To, to just be honest and frank, I think the, the biggest thing for us is the school district's ability to, what lands are developable, what aren't. I think that, um, everyone would acknowledge that the school district does own the property, but there's still some question as to what the design and what the developability of that going forward is. We've been, as you know, hard at work at this development for almost three years and we're still not to a place where we're fully entitled. So the timing of this does take, is difficult. Um, I've always been forthright with Mr. Landz, the school board and the former superintendent, Mr. Decker, that in order for this to happen, the school district would have to be on the same timeline as us. You know, if our grading equipment is out there and we're grading and we can help with the school district, we'll do so. If we're doing infrastructure upgrades, at the same time, we can do so. I can't commit to coming back five years later and doing work on the school district's property and conditioning my product, project to do that. So that's kind of been one of the things that has, um, maybe not furthered, uh, the ball as much as, as we would have liked. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but a lot of those are out of my hands. There was some concern with regards to parking. I would disagree that we are short on parking. In fact, the single-family homes have ample parking as do the row houses. I think what he is referring to is the difference between the city's required parking for multifamily versus what the state mandated required parking is. And that we are utilizing the density bonus parking just for the apartment portion of the development. It's the same parking ratio that we use at the Cloverdale family apartments and I have not heard any questions or concerns from staff, council members, or anyone in the community with regards to parking there. When it comes to parking as a developer and an owner, our interests are aligned with the city. We have to have ample parking at our developments or the tenants won't want to live there. So we've got 5,000 units to take, um, from our experience. This has robust parking. We're confident that the parking will not be an issue here. And with the apartments being the one that has a reduced parking from your city standards, we have the opportunity to manage that through the rental agreement. So I'm confident that that will not be an issue. And then the, the comment with regards to the impact to the school district, um, again, the MND, um, reviewed this. They took comments from the school district and found that with the payment of our impact fees, which for the school district will total, have this right here, approximately $1.4 million. That is how we offset the impact to the school district. So again, I appreciate all the comments with regards to impacts. I'm, I'm confident with the amount of SEQA documentation that we have and review, finding that all of the impacts were less than significant, that we can rely upon that document moving forward. And beyond that, I think just hearing consensus from the council that it is a well-thought-out project. I think the last thing that I'll just touch on, and I touched on a little bit about it at the park, but it just kind of summed it up because everybody had an opinion on that. Our intent is to work with the city to provide this 1.3 acre park in addition to the 6.8 acres that we're already dedicating. The, it was brought to us by the city as an idea to develop Times Square and as a trade-off, so to speak, for developing this parkland. And I think that it's a fantastic idea. What we were hopeful is that we would be able to negotiate everything before we came to the council meeting. We were asked to slow down a little bit because the city actually has to go through a couple processes in order to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement. So we said, no problem. Let's come up with a condition that we both can live with that says, hey, we intend to negotiate the park, the development of the park and us entering into an agreement to develop Times Square. And that's my intent. And that has always been my good faith negotiating standpoint was, you guys want this and it's important to you, let's figure out a way to make it happen. And I think that we can. I think that we've shown the ability to work together and come up with compromises. Um, and that's, that was my intent. And the question really with regards to the Quimby Act didn't come up today until, I don't know, this afternoon. And I think that is one question that I would pose to the, um, city's attorney is if we're dedicating 6.8 acres, can the city then require us to dedicate an additional 1.3? And that's not saying that I don't want to. I'm just asking for clarification so that as we move forward, we're all of the same understanding. I think if we throw into the pot 6.8 acres, 1.3 acres, $2.9 million worth of park impact fees and an additional 1.3 acres to develop into high-density affordable housing at the smart station Times Square, those are all win-win-wins for the city and for us. And so we want to make it happen. We're encouraged to make that happen. And I hope that you can see, um, that you can see our commitment to that. And so with that, I think I would have that one question to the city's attorney. And if perhaps I missed anybody's question, um, please let me know and I'll do my best to answer.
Thank you, Jake.
Mayor, council, if I, if I can, just to weigh in on, on the open space. And I know, I know, uh, Jose will, will backfill what I have to say. First of all, the condition as it's written relative to the open, open space does not require the developer to dedicate it to the city. So that condition does not exist. It should, it says it shall, he shall work with the, the city to determine if it can be, uh, provided to the city. Now, if, if the council would like to see that property dedicated, I, I recommend that we review, uh, that particular condition and revise it accordingly. Uh, I think there's also a reason why development is not proposed on that property and that's because of your general plan. Your general plan specifically provides development guidelines relative to development at the 400-foot elevation. And so, uh, that is a, that is a general plan, open space requirement. And because of a conservation feature, uh, zoning, I mean, excuse me, general plan designation. It's not necessarily because the, it, 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 the, the land area is shown as such because of the general plan, not because it's being pursued as a direct dedication by the city. Jose?
And also just, just to add and maybe I could jump in as well, but open space is not parkland pursuant to Quimby. They're not the same. Usually I don't see them treated the same. Also, the dedication of parkland would, and, and again, you know, this, this has been kind of the last moment. We're trying to get there, of course. But dedication of parkland would also reduce that, that Quimby in Luffy that is currently being, I believe, charged on the project. So that's where the credit is gonna come from as well, is from reducing the park, uh, the park in Luffy's. But, but open space is not generally, um, recognized as, as parkland for Quimby purposes.
Thank you, Jose. Council members, um, I'm gonna ask Kevin, um, if, if, if we don't have any more questions, to recap, uh, the request that's in front of us this evening. There is also a resolution for us to adopt if we want to move forward with this. So Kevin, can I ask you to, to recap your request? Well, the, to the approval of the tentative map in addition to, um, the understanding that negotiations would continue for the community district and for the, um, uh, development of the Times Square.
That's correct. If I can, just on, on that, on that latter point of the,
Times Square?
Community facility district. Just to point the council's direction to condition number 32. It does say formation of a future assessment district. I would recommend the, that the terminology be revised to say, shall not oppose the formation of a community facility district or CFP. Cause we're not, we're not suggesting that a, the developer form an assessment district. Assessment district is like, like you know, is the landscape and lighting district.
Gotcha.
So that would be a correction in the terminology, just to make sure that we're reflecting what's in the, uh, the agenda report. Also is condition number 31, which is, is the property owner shall work with the city to donate the oak woodland. Mr. Lingo referred to dedicate. Again, that's the condition that just wanted to point out. You can certainly leave it like it is, but that does not require the developer to dedicate that to the city. It just says he can work with us. You can certainly leave it like it is, but that does not require the developer to dedicate that to the city. It just says he can work with us. That means a lot of different things to a lot of different folks. And so if you prefer to see that that be dedicated to the city, I would recommend revising that condition to reflect the council's interests relative to the the open space area. Again, that flows from the general plan policy.
Thank you.
I also have a question.
I see your microphone is off.
What?
Your microphone is off. Did you want to say something?
I did. It still really bothers me that we're going to possibly approve a tentative map that isn't what we want. I mean, I'm sure that if if everything falls apart and we don't do the Times Square thing, then we've just approved this project as it is, as it sits.
Yes.
So that eliminates the fact that I feel really strongly about that park, that we need more parkland because it is such a big development with so many people going to be occupying a very small space. The yards are very small. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to infill development because I am not. But I'm just saying that I think that that we do need that park in there. But we're, I think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by approving a tentative map and a design plan that basically is just saying, no, go ahead with exactly what you're seeing here. Am I wrong?
I'm going to defer that to Jose or to Ed.
Could I weigh in, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I hear you guys want a park, and I've I think I've I've committed to you that I'm going to do whatever I can that's best for your community. You've come to me with an offer to an opportunity to develop Times Square, and we don't have that solidified yet, but I will make the commitment to you. You can have the park. I I think that it does help the community. I hear you guys. I've always said that I will listen to you. I hope that in good faith you will can follow through with your commitment to try to negotiate with us so that we can develop Times Square. But if that gives everybody the comfort that they need to move forward with this much-needed housing development, I will commit to you to do that now without your commitment for the Times Square. And you can make that a condition of approval, and we will make the best of it, and I'm confident that we can work something out with the city because, again, we have a proven track record with you. I trust you guys, and I hope you trust us. I want to get this done. I think it's a great development, and I think that the park adds to it. And if that gives you guys all the comfort level you need to approve this tonight, then let's make it a condition and and let's move forward and start to help the residents of Cloverdale get this great development.
Well, thank you, Jake. That definitely goes a long way.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, if I may. So I just want to clarify a few things that I heard this evening. David, you mentioned that there's a pathway forward with language and the conditions for the community facilities district. Can you reiterate that for me one more time?
Something about changing a couple of words will not go against.
The condition is condition of approval to currently reads the property owner shall not oppose the formation of a future assessment district. I think with a minor modification to the terminology, you could say community facilities in lieu of assessment, so strike assessment in place, community facility, and that would suffice to address that issue.
Excellent. Thank you.
Relative to the other issue was whether you want to continue with the language about work with the city to donate, but if if council would prefer that they dedicate, then then that that should be part of that. But if you're comfortable with it is as it is, that's certainly fine. I'm just going to point that out.
Thank you. And then Mary Ann mentioned, again, which I think most, if not all of us, are aligned with the idea of the park, and and Mr. Lingo agreed to to make that make that work even with the with the condition being placed in there. Did I understand that correctly?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Jake. The other thing, too, was it was mentioned as the the impact fees for water and sewer. Now, Mark said to us earlier, and I understand this, that that those aren't actual costs that we saw for the capital improvement. But with the, I think it was 1.8 that Jake was talking about for the water supply impact fees, we could at least fund a major, major portion of cutting a new well with those impact fees. Did I understand that correctly, David?
Vice Mayor, I think you're you're correct. On the the cost estimate that you saw earlier for a new well was about roughly the same as what this project would currently, based on the current calculations, pay in terms of impact fees. As a policy statement, necessarily as a condition of approval, council could articulate that they'd like to see those impact fees go, you know, be be dedicated towards the costs of a of a new well. And obviously, we need to look at that closely just to ensure that we're in compliance with the Development Impact Fee Act. And there's an appropriate nexus to use those fees for that purpose. But you know, that's kind of a separate council discussion in the policy statement, but I think certainly you can certainly argue.
And what was my last? I think that was it. Okay, cool. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to go around the table one more time. Councilmember Bagby, are you okay with Jake's commitment to do a recreational facility there?
Absolutely.
And moving the project forward?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham, did that satisfy your concerns about a recreational area?
It it did to a point. Jose, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So I can be assured after this meeting that something isn't going to happen and eliminate that park?
Well, we would be asking if that's the way, and and I appreciate Mr. Lingo's offer here because if that's what the council wants, in order not to delay the project or bring it back for another meeting. And I know that Ed is over there crafting some some good motion. But it would be providing direction to staff to make that edit, to make that change on the vesting tentative map so we can go ahead and take the direction, take the approval with the direction to actually show the area where the park is going to be and have that be on the vesting tentative map instead of the proposed condition of approval that was presented in the staff report. So yes, if that's the direction we move, Councilmember Brigham, it would be directing staff to make that change on the tentative map.
And so the only thing would be is is who's basically going to end up paying for the improvements there? The playground equipment, that kind of stuff. So that can be negotiated, I guess, later. But all right, so I can be feel good about this? Secure?
Yes, that that's what the plan is going to is going to show, and it's it's only a tentative map. It's a vesting tentative map, so, you know, there would be potential requests, but it won't it wouldn't be set up like we were talking about before. If the plan would actually show the map you would approve today would be given us direction to change that, to show a park there regarding improvements on it. That's going to be a discussion later. There is language regarding using the other in lieu fees instead of making having them pay for it. Some developers like to develop something instead of having to pay more fees. But that's something I believe in conversations with the city manager. That's something we would be discussing and discussing with the with the developer as well, what works best.
Okay, I just don't want to end up with an empty piece of land. And since they've got bulldozers out there, it would be nice if they could do some of the work. All right, then I'm I'm feeling better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, can we go ahead with a resolution?
That's that's really covered the the stuff that that I have. The only thing that's that's hard for me to comment on, I I have to rely on the information from the study, is we're getting some conflicting opinions about whether the school district can absorb these children. I don't know how to weigh in on that, so I have to rely on the study.
Well, I think I think the school district, you know, could enter into their own agreements. I mean, we're just looking at it from this standpoint. And the study says that, you know, it could, they could handle it. So I I'm I'm in favor of it. I would just need either Jose or Kevin to let us know how to amend the resolution. That's attachment number one, so that we can move on to the next subject.
And and I'll ask Ed, Ed, the first resolution is just the I believe it's the environmental document, the mitigated negative declaration. For that one, I don't know if we need to make changes or do we need to make a finding given that that slight change that the council would like to move forward with, it sounds like, for the changing the tentative map to show a park?
I would to adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration as it now stands. And then when we make the approvals of the actual project entitlements, add a finding that the approvals are consistent with the analysis in the mitigated neg-deck.
Perfect. Thank you. So Mayor, the first one, the first resolution, if the council was ready to make a motion, that's just the environmental, that's ready to go as is, as as presented.
Okay, and Irene, where are we going to find that on our packet? Did you pop it up on the screen? Oh, thank you.
It's right there.
Okay, would somebody like to do that?
Sure.
Which one is it, please, Irene?
A.
Okay.
I'll offer the resolution by title only. Do I have a nod?
Is there a second? Councilmember Bagby?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, a resolution.
Should we just vote on it?
So I I think I know that the council has read because they introduced ordinances by title only, and the custom has been to actually read the resolution.
Mayor, councilmembers, just clarification, are we amending the resolution? Are we keeping it with the with the with the tentative map as it is, with the six lots?
Well, according to Jose, we're we're not amending the first one, number A.
Right now, they're just doing the environmental.
Okay. Mary Ann, could you read it real quick?
Yeah, that's the A one. That's the environmental. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act for the Baumgartner Ranch Annexation and Pre-Zoning Project on approximately 28.42 plus or minus acres of undeveloped land located at 28195 and 28193 Old Redwood Highway APNs 117, 040, 053, and 084.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Bagby. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Mayor Turner. Councilmember Bagby.
Hi.
Councilmember Brigham.
Hi.
And Mayor Walter.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, I guess, is number B.
Ma- Mayor, I have a, if I had a quick question for Ed.
Please.
Regarding the amended condition. Ed, can we write something like prior to approval of final map? Lots one through eight shall be amended to indicate however we're going to designate. Does it need to be, does the tentative map need to be amended, or could that be completed on the map?
The approval resolution that we would be making would be to just approve the vesting tentative map as amended by the council's conditions requiring the park in lieu of the lots.
So it would be the vesting tentative map, then we?
Yeah, you we want to, we would want to, we need to have consistency between the final map and the approved we would ask the council to amend the resolution that's in the packet to take out, to to accomplish what the council wants to do in terms of the parkland dedication.
Thanks, Ted.
Okay, so are we going to read that? That resolution? Or how do we?
So first thing we need to do is clarify that there are no other amendments. David had offered to some amendments regarding the community facilities district. So that would be one potential amendment. And then the second potential amendment would be to amend the map to eliminate the eight lots and instead require a dedication of parkland. So basically, we would be moving to adopt B as written with those two amendments. And maybe David could provide the language on the CFD again. And the language on the amendment for the lots would be to eliminate lots. And I'm going to have to rely on Kevin then for their numbers, but lots, you know, one through eight. And instead, having a parkland dedication on the vesting tentative map.
So a way forward, Mayor? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, we don't do, we don't do so good if it's not written out in front of us, to be honest.
So so what I was going to say, a way forward. A way forward, Mayor, would just be to read the motion and then say as amended, and then have staff prepare, just state the amendments for the record. I think that would capture it if that's where the council wanted to go.
So moved as amended.
And let's let's let the record reflect that we're amending condition number seven, which currently requires, you know, within 30 days of approval of tentative subdivision map, the developer in the city shall enter to exclusive negotiating agreement. I think we're going to treat that separately. Let's let's have that condition reflect that the tentative map will be revised to eliminate the seven single or eight single-family lots adjacent to, I guess it's Street B in favor of a 1.3 acre park.
David, I think it's lots 34 through 41.
So let let the record reflect that those 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 lots, 33 through 41, will be eliminated in favor of a 1.3, approximately 1.3 acre park. And then condition number
32?
32, again, remove the word assessment and replace it with community facility.
Right. Melanie, would you like to offer as amended number B?
Oh, certainly, Mr. Mayor. A resolution, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a precise development plan, design review, general plan amendment, tentative map, and pre-zoning approximately 28.42 plus or minus acres of land located at 28195 and 28193 Old Redwood Highway APNs 117-040-053 and -084 to the planned development PD zoning district as amended.
And that's seconded by?
I'll second.
By Councilmember Turner. Irene, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby?
Hi.
Councilmember Brigham?
You are muted, Irene.
Sorry. Hi.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Turner?
Hi.
Mayor Walter?
Hi. Jake, thank you. Oh, is it one more?
The first reading of the
I'm so sorry. Now, is that a straight reading, or do we have to do any changes to that?
No amendments needed on the ordinance.
Would someone like to introduce that?
I can offer it. Did somebody else come in there?
Go ahead, Mary Ann, please.
An ordinance of the City of Cloverdale amending Title 18 zoning of the municipal city municipal code, pre-zoning certain properties containing approximately 28.42 acres of land located at 28193 and 28195 Old Redwood Highway through the planned unit development PD zoning district APNs 117, 040, 053, and 084.
Second?
I'll second. Okay, seconded by Turner. Can we have a roll call, please? Irene?
Yes, Councilmember Brigham. Yes. Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, it's only 10:30, would you like to take another two-minute break? No, should we keep plowing along? Okay, let's keep plowing along. The next item is, item, well, we already did six. Oh, Jake, thank you. And Ed, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I really appreciate it and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number eight, budget amendment for the Cloverdale Safe Roots to School Phase Two project in the amount of $150,000. Authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with GHD, Inc., and approve revised overall budget for the project. And this item is...
We should bring Marta and Mark back there.
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Cruz excused herself due to her current health condition.
Okay. All right, just let the record reflect that. I see Mr. Ringtone is back with us. Thank you, Mark. And so David, was that your item?
This is the city engineer.
Oh. Mark, please.
Let me just talk to, everyone knows about the Safe Roots to School project, Mr. Mayor. You've kind of took note of it and the delays that was happening. Well, the design drawings that were prepared for that project, they were prepared a number of years back, and they're finally brought to bid. There was an error, a slight error in elevation in one of the design drawings, and the contractor picked up on that, of course, and made it an issue. And so he kind of basically delayed the project until we resolved it. We had to pull in some professional construction managers, GHD, to come in and resolve the situation for us. They know how to deal with contractors that are especially challenging. So ergo, that's what's before you now, is to increase the budget to cover the cost of the change order that could be accompanying this future dates, and also to pay for the construction management services, that's GHD, to go ahead and manage the project to completion. And as you can see, they've already placed concrete, so that project is moving along. They should be wrapping it up here in another, I would hope, three weeks. But if you have any questions, please ask, and I'll answer them to them at my best ability.
Councilmembers, any questions?
I just have one. I mean, you made mention that the contractor is particularly difficult. Does some of this reflect on policy being that we have to take the lowest bid?
I would defer my comments. I don't want to talk in particular to this contractor, so I'll just refrain from answering that question right now, but we could talk offline.
Fair enough.
Okay. Councilmembers, is there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Well, I believe there's a resolution, attachment one, for this item, if somebody would like to make it.
Of the item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Could you read by title longer, please?
Certainly. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a budget amendment of $150,000 to increase the total project budget for the Cloverdale Safe Roots to School. Two, project to $504,150. Two, authorizing the city manager to pay all change orders and expenses up to the authorized project amount. And three, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with GHD, Inc. for project management services in an amount not to exceed $69,303 in a form approved by the city attorney. Was my mic off?
No, you got it.
All right. So you guys, you guys heard Lieutenant speed by the house then, so.
And Mayor, did we open it up to the public? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My fault. My bad.
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, no hands raised, then could we have a roll call, please?
I think we need a second, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not...
Oh, no, I seconded.
Okay, good. It's getting late.
It is.
Councilmember Bagby?
She said aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is designation of the City of Cloverdale's voting delegate and alternate. Voting delegate for the 2020 League of California Cities Annual Conference Business Meeting. And this item is...
I'll take it.
Okay.
So good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight is the item to discuss the choosing of a voting delegate and up to two alternates, should the council choose. Just a little bit of background, the city is a member of the League of California Cities. The league works with multiple cities in California jointly to influence and support legislation, policy decision. The league's annual conference is usually held in October down in Long Beach. This year, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the conference will be held virtually October 7th through 9th. The voting delegate will be responsible for submitting the vote card at the business meeting on Friday, October 9th. And by the council's next meeting, we should see the resolution or resolutions being presented at the business meeting, and we'll seek direction at that meeting on how the council wishes to vote on the proposed resolutions. The council is not required to have a representative attend the conference, and if this is the direction of the council, then no further action is required. A travel and training budget was approved as part of the budget process to include this annual conference. And that really concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Irene. And I guess the big question is, how much of a travel budget was actually allocated for this Zoom meeting? I think you and I scored...
Mayor, I say, I say we take it and go to the brew pub. So, Mr. Mayor, I say we take the travel budget and go to the brew pub.
I'm sorry? I'll go to the brew pub, yeah. Well, let's go ahead. City manager, I hate to assume, but I would think the budget at this point is a non-issue for this item, seeing how it's going to be Zoom.
Yeah. So maybe I can save, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can save you a lot of time. I've already signed up and I have to go. I am on the executive board, and I am on the resolution committee as well. And so unless someone else has signed up and somebody else wants to vote, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Well, Irene, any input on that? Are you okay with Melanie doing that?
Oh, I'm just, I'm thrilled. Let her do it.
Okay. And would it be...
You guys all owe me a beer, but you can put it on the city, so.
Is that okay?
Yeah, you want to be the alternate, is that what you said?
Please.
Yeah, wish me.
Okay. Irene, do you need more instructions? We're getting a little punchy here.
No, as long as I have consensus, then we will go with Melanie being the voting delegate and then, or excuse me, Councilmember Bagby as the voting delegate and Mayor Walter as the alternate.
That'd be great. Thank you.
It does say by motion, the staff report, actually.
Time's in again, the attorney, it's always with you.
I'm gonna turn off my camera, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, by motion. Thank you.
All right. I'd really like to, not shortchange anyone on the subcommittee.
Wait, hold on, I think we have to do something here. I think I have to say, I'd like to make a motion to approve Melanie Bagby as the designate city's voting delegate and alternate Gus Walter voting delegate for the League of California Cities 2020 Annual Conference, scheduled for October 7th through 9th, 2020, which will be held virtually by Zoom.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so subcommittee reports. Maybe we can move through them rather quickly, if there's no hot topics that we need to discuss. So the first one is finance, administration, and police.
Unless there are any questions, our next meeting is September 1st at 1:00 PM. And just so that people can make note of it, I believe we're gonna, at least for the time being, move that subcommittee meeting to, it is to a semi-permanent status at 1:00 PM.
I wonder if the subcommittee wants to look at that list of the capital improvement projects before it comes back to us on the 9th, from Mark Hildebrandt. Would you guys be interested in that?
That's a capital idea. I see, you know, it's late because I'm making puns now. Yeah. What do you think, Mark?
We still have a pending, you know, GHD is still preparing an updated report for us on capital improvements, a capital improvement program. And so that's the opportunity to discuss, you know, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, what can be pushed back. I would, I know we kind of pushed the funding ahead of the schedule, but that's the reality. So we know how much we can build to now. So I think the discussion of individual projects would probably be more appropriate when we present the capital improvement program.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the planning sustainability, and that next meeting is October the 20th at 4 o'clock. How about Public Works? Jason?
Yeah, Public Works' next scheduled meeting is September the 22nd, 2020, 4:00 PM.
Thank you. And the Joint City Fire District?
So we went to try and schedule a meeting sooner than October 12th, and for obvious reasons, we haven't been able to align the members of the fire board with us. So again, with our efforts to try and get one in sooner, our next current meeting is scheduled for October 12th at 5:30.
Thank you. How about the Joint City School District?
Okay. Next meeting with the Joint City School District will be September the 21st, 5:00 PM on Zoom.
Okay. And the Homeless Community Advisory Group will be meeting shortly. Before I come off of the council reports, I just wanted to open it up to the public. Irene, if there's anybody out there that would like to chat with us about any of these items? I think the room's empty.
Room is empty, so no hands are raised.
Okay. All right. Next is informational reports. I see none. How about legislative reports? Anything?
Mayor staff, Mayor and council staff doesn't have any legislative reports this evening.
Okay, thank you. Status on current emergency? Anything, David?
Just a brief update. The council took action tonight to ratify the emergency proclamation. Staff just keeps, is continuing to monitoring the Wall Bridge fire. It seems like right now there are favorable conditions that are enabling a CAL FIRE and our individual fire districts to maintain a lid on future growth of the fire. But we, as staff, are continuing to monitor that after standing up the EOC over the weekend, and we'll keep a close eye on it to determine if there's any anticipated impact to the city. And we do want the community to know that we are closely monitoring it and will continue to participate in the operational area calls with Sonoma County and help with the recovery mode as the CAL FIRE and our fire districts continue to keep the fire under containment. And obviously, there's also, you know, continuing pandemic of COVID, so we'll continue to track cases. And just for reference, the County Department of Public Health is now publishing data on a ZIP code level, so that's accessible information via the Sonoma County website, so you can see specific case counts for the county, but in addition to the City of Cloverdale, or at least the ZIP codes in which the City of Cloverdale sits.
Thank you, David. Thank you. City manager, city attorney reports? Okay.
No reports, Mayor.
Future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, before we go ahead and close this meeting on the city council, I just want to say thank you to staff, senior staff, David, Kevin, Chief, Susie, for opening up the EOC. I don't have to tell you, we brought it to stage three, and very professionally done, as always. And Chief, the manuals, it was refreshing to see them up to date. Did a real good job, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you. With that being said, let's go home. Meeting adjourned. Good seeing you, Susie.
Bye. Take care, everybody.